Design and tender documents and supervise construction for the project to replace and rebuild Martin Street Public School with a 740 pupil place JK28 facility and ISO move.
Moved by Vice Chair Collard, seconded by Trustee Grabance. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you.
The next item be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, appoint the architectural firm of Hasek and Associates Architects Incorporated to prepare the design and guidelines for the new elementary schools as detailed in request for proposal 14-36 and ISO move.
Moved by Vice Chair Collard, seconded by Trustee Graves. Is there any discussion? Trustee Harvey Hope. The wording is design guidelines?
Yes, the "and" should be removed.
And the last vote that we just had came up really quickly, but I'm not sure, we know it was Martin Street, we voted on, but I thought it said Milton Number 10, so I think they may have gotten out of order.
Martin Street Public School.
On screen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was moved by Vice Chair Collard, seconded by Trustee Graves. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And the fourth motion, be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, subject to ministry approval and board approval of the specific project, appoint the architectural firm of Hasek and Associates Architects Incorporated to prepare the design and tender documents, Phase Two, for the proposed new elementary school ERA 127, Milton Number 10, to be built in Milton using the guidelines developed and ISO move.
Moved by Vice Chair Collard, seconded by Trustee Harvey Hope. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And our final item, whereas the Halton District School Board values the end of year reporting for our students' achievements, therefore be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the request of the Director to spend up to $100,000 to support the production of abbreviated report cards or marked summaries for elementary students over the summer. Funding for this project to be from contingency and ISO move.
Moved by Vice Chair Collard, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Trustee Grabance.
Through your chair, I just want to confirm that the grade eight students in K to eight schools, the grade six students in K to six schools, and the grade five students in K to five schools will still be receiving report cards by the end of this year, or when is?
Director Uwali.
That is our intention and I believe the principals have begun working on those students in those grades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers. Sorry, I have to go back to voting control. All those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the final motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now up to order paper. Is there any comments or questions regarding the order paper tonight? Seeing none, we are up to action items. 3.4.1.
No, because that's always the one that is. Do we need to?
No, just so the public's aware, the grade items on the order paper will not be on it on the next board meeting, is so that you're aware that those items are coming off. Thank you. Our next item is action items, the Director's Summer Authority, Director Uwali, report 15079 on page 10 of your board package.
Thank you, Chairperson. This is our standard end of the year motion, giving the Director authority to operate over the summer months in between board meetings. And as always, a full report of any actions taken during the summer will be made available to trustees in September.
Thank you, I'll read the motion. Be resolved that the Halton District School Board delegate authority during the summer months of 2015 to the Director of Education with regard to awarding tenders for capital projects or other emergent business matters as required. Be it resolved, the Director of Education report on any capital projects awarded or other decisions made through delegated authority to the Board at the end of summer 2015. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Gray. Is there any discussion on this motion tonight? Nope, well, okay, a sec, I'm at the wrong, okay, trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you to you, Madam Chair, to the Director, thank you very much for, I think we probably with our private session transaction, transacted business covered off most of what might have otherwise popped up, but is there anything else that you are thinking that might happen over the summer?
I don't anticipate anything of a major nature coming up over the summer, but there may be a project that requires the threshold of an amount of money that would have to be expended in order to correct a problem or to respond to an urgency. The other issue that is very common over the summer is the installation of portables in excess of what we anticipate right now, and often that additional portable or two exceeds the budget. And I guess the other issue is possible increase in staffing. All those have to be done over the summer in order to be prepared for students to arrive in September. And all decisions that are made, prior to any decision being made, there's a review of extra revenues that may accompany those extra students to make sure that we would not over exceed the total budget amount.
Thank you, trustee Grabance.
Through your chair, I'm just wondering, does the authority happen after the last board meeting and then is sort of rescinded when the first board meeting of the new year? Or when does, what's the timing?
And that's my understanding, that it would end with the first board meeting in September. We are having another board meeting this year, but it is a special board meeting, so it's in effect from now till the meeting in September.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers on the list today, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. So we are now up to student trustee reports, but as they're studying diligently for their exams, our next item is notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Did I see your hand up, Associate Director Miller?
I was motioned.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we're up to action items for our special board meeting next Wednesday, June the 24th. The first item is program viability report. Associate Director Miller, report 15081, page 11 of your board package. A.D. Miller.
Thank you, and good evening trustees. I've got the report around program viability. This is the written report. We've had a verbal update earlier in the, a couple of months ago, and I'm going to make a few comments in a minute, but I'd like to start by reminding everybody, because you may not even know, so it might not be reminding, but this year commemorates 400 years of French presence in Ontario. And it was in 1610, which is 400 and a bit, where Échambroulet and Samuel de Champlain first started exploring New France and most of Ontario. So I think there's some appropriateness to this presentation tonight, and the Ministry of Education has actually recognized this and will be providing resources for our schools, both in the immersion program and in the core program, to commemorate this, obviously something very important for the history of this province, but also the entire country. With the program viability report, I'll make a few comments, but I will invite, there were three trustees on the committee, and in addition to that, some of the people on the outside, but in particular the trustees and the director, I invite you to make comments after my comments. I know all of you around this table are aware of the challenges that we are facing, and it seems somewhat ironic, I think, because our French immersion program is very robust, and we have many, many, many students opting for French immersion. There are unintended consequences of that, though, and that is if you see in one of the appendices, Appendix Two, I believe, you'll see that several of our dual-track schools have extremely low numbers in the English side of that program. And we as a board and you as trustees had some very difficult decisions to wrestle with earlier in this school year as Pineland morphed into a single-track French immersion school. So when we met as a program viability committee, we initially developed, and I'm not going to talk specifically about what's in the report because you've got it and read, we wanted to make sure that this was not about French immersion. This is about viability for French, our students that choose French immersion, and to provide a robust and vibrant program for them, and also for our students that do not choose French immersion, so that they also have the same challenges, the same opportunities within their classes. And as you'll see, that we've got some kids in grade one choosing, we have six, five, three, numbers like that staying in the English program. That makes it difficult for those kids. In addition, we have some challenges around French teacher recruitment as well, as do all the other boards. Also, in the context of our report, many boards are experiencing the same challenges around us. We use reports from other areas, we also spoke with many people in other boards, and many of them are experiencing the same difficulties, maybe not the right word, but challenges, and are themselves going through reviews, public consultations, et cetera, to try to figure this out, in order that all their students can be supported. And I think that is the theme of this, how do we support all our students in the program of choice? Because by staying in English, they're not really making a choice, but they're choosing not to go into French immersion. The final thing I have to say is, this report is really only halfway there. There's two recommendations. One are the options that we wrestled with, there's four options there, we looked at nine different scenarios, plus we also talked about a few hybrids within those nine, eight scenarios, sorry, eight different kinds of scenarios, how we could deliver French immersion and English within schools, dual-track, single-track, you know, greater intensity, mid-entry, grade four, early entry, 100% French immersion, a whole host of things. The intent always was that this would be the report that would go to the public, so that we could hear from the public on what their beliefs are and what they value and what they would like to see us do. The challenge, of course, when we go to the public is, they'll be lobbying as well, as trustees around this table know that they'll be lobbying. Our hope is that we get solid information that we can then form a recommendation on program viability for both English and French that can be put in front of the trustees, and that we are not subject to the lobbying efforts, because it's not about a vote, it's not about which side wins and which side loses. Our intent is that all sides, both our French immersion students, those choosing French immersion, and those choosing not to go in French immersion, all have the same opportunities educationally going forward. So that's the intent. So by the end of September, you will have another report in front of you, which will outline that consultation process, the communication that we will do with the public, and our hope is, you will also have it in that report, that there'll be a timeline when a final recommendation will come to the Board of Trustees. It may be in the form of one or two options, or it may just be a single recommendation on how we believe we can offer, support both programs and a program, our program viability in both English and French. So I think I've said enough, I invite any of the trustees to weigh in. I would say, I'm sorry, I would say this, the committee itself found, we wrestled with some real challenges on this, and you can go one way or the other, and there is no perfect answer out there that we were able to find that would go to the public and say, here's the one option we're considering, what do you think? There are many different facets to this, to figure out how we should be offering it. So the one real challenge we have is in November, well, not one real, we have many. In November 2013, there was a report to the Board, and in that report, there was a recommendation that we provide primary core French for all our schools, and it's in the report, by June 2018, we will do that, and as you'll recall, I brought a report to the Board earlier this year, asking for the expansion, we've expanded to 15 more schools. In part, that was in response to the challenges we were having with French immersion, and the hope is that that would help staunch the uptake of French immersion in some of our schools. It has, to a certain extent, we believe there's been about a 5% decrease of French uptake, primarily in single-track English schools to single-track or dual-track French immersion schools. The decrease in dual-track schools is marginal. So one can make the argument that we need to let that wait, and we need to follow that through and allow that to, to see what happens with primary core French, we have not given it enough time. That's a fair criticism, I believe. However, the consequences of allowing that to happen may mean we may have 15 or more schools morphing into single-track French immersion, if we were to wait two, three, four years to allow that to run its course. So without that, I will pass it on, and if there's any of the trustees or Director Uwali would like to make some comments, and then I'm open for questions.
There are some questions or comments coming your way, but I would like to thank you, Associate Director Miller, and the rest of the committee, the trustees that were involved and all the staff, for all the hard work that went into this, because I know there was a lot of time committed, and there was a lot of difficult discussions that were had. And the four options that you're bringing to us, I believe, are a fair cross-section of different options for the community to look at, and I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that went into this, so thank you for bringing this to the Board.
Make a comment? Through your chair, Amos, I too would also like to thank the committee, if you see the composition of the committee, they were all principals, and we took a cross-section of the types of schools that they were in, dual-track English, single-track French, single-track English, and we included secondary as well, because ultimately, there are implications or potential implications for secondary as well. So they were a great group, and I want to thank those in the room and those that aren't in the room now for the work they've done.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this report and the challenges that it must have been presented to bring all of that information together. I appreciate that the options have pros and cons, and I appreciate that you looked beyond the board and boards at best practices from elsewhere, I think that's great. I really look forward to a creative and inclusive consultation program, so that we can be clear with all of our families that their voice is valued, no matter which view that they hold, and hopefully we can do some creative things to try and get those folks that we don't normally hear from involved as well. And then my question is, with respect to Appendix Two, the information presented is related to dual-track schools and showing the impact on the English programs, I wonder whether, in the interest of giving a full picture, we would need to show how many kids, how many students enter French immersion programs from all types of schools. So in Oakville, for example, where we have single-stream FI schools, they're coming from a bunch of other centers, which then are left in a certain predicament, perhaps, which may also be a piece of the puzzle for people. Thanks.
Through you, Chair, Mr. Trustee Al Harrison. We have not, we only included dual-track schools, because that's the biggest issue. You can get the single-track information off the LTAP, and I can send you the link with the actual pages. And a school, I'll give you an example of a single-track English school which feeds into a single-track French immersion school, West Oak, they, over the past eight years, have gone from about a 27% uptake to about 52% uptake into FI. So the problem, I shouldn't say problem, the challenges exist in the single-track schools as well, it's not as pronounced, but a school like West Oak has a very large attachment area, so the impact is not as discernible. But certainly, we can provide, I mean, overall, as a board, we're roughly around, you know, between 35 and 40% in FI uptake, but in some of our areas, it's 85%, 75%. So, you know, I mean, that can certainly be included in the consultation, so people can see all the data, and we can work that out, that's not an issue.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you, I just wanted to speak to trustees as a member of this committee, and point out a few things. First is the sort of binary nature of some of the options that were presented with four options. Effectively, there are three decisions to make within those options. There's, of course, grade one entry versus grade four, there's capping versus not, and there's single versus dual track, and all of those decisions are reflected within those four options. I know there are going to be strong feelings about any number of those particular issues, but I just want to remember that this motion today is to go forward for public consultation. So if you can look at those options and see a way forward, if you personally see a solution amongst those, then I'm sure you will find yourself in support of the motion, because this is to gather more information about those options. The next step would be, once we have the public feedback, to make further decisions from there and really drill down to the details of whatever direction we choose, but it's to point us in a direction. And personally, I'm really looking forward to seeing the public feedback on some of these issues from the broad range of the Halton community.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, thank you very much for this report. I'm so eager to see what the public has to say about it. I have to ask, though, between options three and four, there seems to be no wiggle room, and yet we have some very different types of communities within Halton, and I'm wondering why such a strong delineation where it's only in dual-track or only in single-track, and no marriage of the two, where it might be in dual-track schools where that would benefit the community, and in single-track schools where that would benefit the community. Was there thought put into that, or were you hoping for the feedback to feed that decision in the process?
Through your chair, Amos, the Vice Chair Collard, actually, it's both. There was thought put into it, we did talk about that very thing, and it came up about different solutions for different regions, different areas as well. We felt we needed to have a starting point to go to the public with, to give the public essentially a framework or skeleton to look at. And ultimately, the recommendation that may be before the trustees recommending the delivery may be a hybrid of one of these, including what you just described. It may come out that way, once we get that feedback and we look at it. I will say this, I know this much about the consultation process that we will be doing. We will be rigging these scenarios up in more detail so that the public can see them. You know, you've seen in the section of the report where we talk about implications, we will have that clear, so the public can see what the implications are. And our hope is also to indicate any costs that might be attached with any of those implications, if there's increased busing or decreased busing, or whatever else it may be. So, yeah, the answer to your question is, it was both, we did look at it, and we expect we'll probably hear that as well, and it may ultimately end up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. As a member of the committee, I just would like to reiterate that it was indeed a very challenging exercise. It's a complex issue that we're trying to solve, sorry. The committee gave a lot of consideration also to student choice and optimal success, the viability of both the English and the French programs in schools, and consideration to the neighborhood concept of a school. And so I really look forward to public input that will help us to shape the best possible model that will ensure viability of both the English and the French programs, and a model that will be sustainable and that will not need to be revisited every couple of years. I'm really hoping that we can find a really solid solution that everybody will be happy to go forward with. As a request to further build on this report, I'm thinking it might be prudent to include some context around class sizes and ratios, what would be ideal, transportation costs related to busing children out of neighborhood school to attend a FI program elsewhere, attrition rates, and the implications of boundaries on the ratios of English and French students. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you very much. I'll go closer, so hopefully I can be heard. I don't know if this is just me, if anybody else has the same concern. I'm reading in the warrant, going to the public for consultation, and I'm not quite seeing how we're going to consult with the public. I've read it a couple times, and I'm not seeing that. I'm also concerned that we're going to the public for consultation in the fall of 2015. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, the communication is to be presented to us, no later than, I thought the recommendation was coming to us, no later than, so I had a saw a real dichotomy in community consultation in about two and a half days. So, sorry, apparently I need to read a little closer, please excuse me.
May I comment on, through your chair, Amos, to trustee Danielli? That's okay. But I would like to comment, our purpose in this is, we felt it was important that the trustees be apprised of the process as we go along, hence the verbal report, hence this, and then the communication report, rather than just botch it all or bring it all together and then just bring a final recommendation. We thought it was important that you essentially see all the steps that we go, because I know, let's be honest, regardless of what finally comes before the trustees, there will be some contentiousness to it, and I think if you have all that information at the front end, then it helps when you're answering those difficult questions, shall we say?
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
I just want to echo the comments of trustee Oliver earlier, I totally agree with what she's had to say. My concern would be, not a concern, but a suggestion, when we get the report at the end of September about the way in which the consultation and communication will occur with the community, I would see this as a very, very critical aspect of the success of moving forward. I would like to hope that we will hear about a myriad of opportunities, perhaps focus groups within communities. I'd like to think that the timing of the consultation and communication would be very fulsome, allowing the maximum number of people to be involved, whether it be through social media, survey, monkey, whatever it is that we're choosing, but that we don't hear at a later time that the public felt that they didn't have enough opportunity to to contribute to the consultation of this particular motion going forward. So I just hope, I'm very hopeful for a very fulsome manner of communicating with the community so that everyone feels that their voice can be heard in this very, you know, perhaps contentious set of recommendations. I think it's very important. I think we learned a little bit from the Pine Lands situation and I think that that was really made clear to us. Many of us trustees are actively involved in, in discussions about the FI program right now. And I know that that's certainly been the case where communication has been certainly reinforced to us that we need to make sure that we are very fulsome in the approach. So I'm looking forward to the recommendations and, and the report coming in to the trustees, the Board of Trustees in the month of September and hopefully we'll hear of the many different ways in which the public will be consulted.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Gray. And this is also related to Trustee Al Harrison. That is certainly our intent. My, my thinking at this point, which will reconvene the committee to sort that out, is use a variety of sources, including social media. We want to maximize the input without it appearing as though people are voting for an option. We want information and so we're going to use social media, focus groups, public meetings, meetings, sorry. And, can't help it. And so a variety and some surveys. The challenge, of course, is we find this with boundary reviews, that people often believe it's a vote and then we're, we find ourselves in difficult. We, we're going to try to figure out creative ways to do this and use all sources available in a manner in which it is not a vote, but maximizes the amount of information and the type of information we get.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you through the Chair to the committee. Thank you for such a, a good report. I so appreciate that it was well represented and, and very well composed and shows a lot of diversity in our, in our board. I'm very excited to hear the feedback from our community and I'm just wondering, when I was looking at the options, two of the options, the mid-entry grade four level, whether it would be of value to our community to obtain some or share some data on what are the results of students who in other boards have perhaps entered French immersion at, in grade four and what their French, French success rates are. I, I know in the report, it was said that we currently do not measure French language proficiency, but perhaps is there some other boards that have done so? I think it would be valuable for families to know if they chose that or recommended that entry level, what, what sort of success rate their child could have.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Reynolds. Yeah, as you identified, there is, we do not measure French proficiency, or French language proficiency in our programs. Essentially, we measure by those students that ultimately graduate from high school who have been able to gain 10 credits in French. I am not aware and nor was anybody else in the committee, including research, of any board that does measure French proficiency. There's plenty of research around acquisition of language. You know, the, the prevailing view is the earlier you start, the more, the better you're going to acquire the language. Hence, one of the things that I didn't mention and it's in the report, is all of this is predicated on French, primary core French being in all our schools. So our students will be exposed to French from grade one. And, you know, we are looking at, can we increase the intensity of that and the number of minutes? But there's European studies that show different things. They, 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 as you're probably well aware, many European kids speak not just two languages, they speak two and three and four languages and many of them are not in immersion programs, they're in core programs and things such as that. So it, it, I, I, we have no problem looking at that, Trustee Reynolds. We have had difficulty in finding where they measure proficiency coming out of the, the system. If we're able to find it, we'll certainly include it. I, I, I think it's valuable, so.
Thank you. Trustee Pappan.
Thank you through the Chair to you, Associate Director Miller. I'd also like to thank you for your efforts in spearheading this committee and this report. I think your efforts are going to be greatly appreciated. My concern as being part of the board, the committee was capping. And I really appreciated reading through your port, report because when we just, we think of capping, we don't think of option two. You mentioned how if we have a single-track schools, that's another form of capping. And you also mentioned about our mission statement and our, our mission statement includes choice. So if we have to bring in capping or any form of capping, we're limiting our students' choice. So I also look forward to the public consultation and I hope in some way, if we could have a hybrid of some of the options, that might be another alternative. Thank you.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Pappan. There are also, I haven't discussed those in here, but we would present those to the public, the different methodologies that some boards have used for capping. There's regional capping, there's by-school capping and, and all sorts of methods of doing it, so.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you through you Madam Chair to Associate Director Miller. I'll echo what everybody else has said about, thank you very much for all the time and effort put into this. As a member of the previous committee, I know exactly how hard it's going to work. And I'm really interested to see the public consultation piece. Having seen both versions of FI, both a late entry with primary core French and experienced primary French immersion, I've seen both sides and I know there's research out there to say that it can work both ways. As coming from the ward that has probably pretty close to the highest overall uptake in French immersion, I have a few concerns on specific ward implications to some of these options. And so I'm hoping that in that feedback, we can flush that out a bit in that we might end up with some interesting boundary reviews if one took some of these options and said tomorrow, this is what's happening. And also transition plans, kids that are already in grade two French immersion, you know, do they continue on and all of our usual transition plans and how that would look like in neighborhoods with 75 and 80% French immersion uptakes? We could end up with an empty school or two if not careful. So, and then the other piece is the, the motion is, talks about capping would be determined at a later date and yet, in answer to Trustee Pappan, you just talked about putting more information about capping in that consultation document. So perhaps we could work on the wording of the motion so that it, it's very clear that we're not saying, yes, send us out for these four options and, oh, by the way, the capping will be discussed after you provide feedback. So just to, to wiggle that a bit. And, but thank you very much for your, your work on this and I look forward to reading the multitude of feedback that I know we're going to get.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. In terms of boundary reviews, we know if a particular recommendation comes forward and it may entail some boundary reviews, when we go to the public with this, we will provide more information about the implications, including boundary reviews. And the same with capping. When I was, when I'm saying capping would be determined at a later date, I don't mean that, yeah, I understand what you're saying around the wording. It's not to say that we will come to you later with the capping. What that means is we will present to the public the different forms of capping so they can comment on it. And if ultimately, we bring a report to the board that involves capping, we would describe exactly what it means, the implications of it, et cetera. So that's, that's the intent behind that, but I understand what you're, you're, you're saying. But we certainly wouldn't want to go out to the public and say, well, trust us, we're going to cap and we'll figure it out. We'd have to be clear with the public. We'd have to be clear with the public, the types of capping and, and get their comments on that, so.
Thank you. Trustee Grevens.
Through you Chair to Associate Director Miller. Just a couple of things. Thank you very much for all the work that the committee has done on this, very important work. With regards to the consultation, will you be including imagined scenarios for families specifically so that they really understand what's going on? Like, you know, if capping's involved, if, you know, potentially splitting siblings or things like that, where people actually understand from a personal level as well what this actually means? Also, a lot of the families that are going to be affected by whatever decision comes to the board, they may not even have children in the system yet. So I would really strongly encourage, encourage you to use the methods that you mentioned, but also to approach daycares and things like that because these kids aren't in school yet. Their families, you know, are unaware of what's going on in the system. I know when I had kids that weren't in school yet, I wasn't paying any attention to what was going on in the school board, but decisions were made and they affected me. Thank you.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Grevens. Yeah, that, that's, I would anticipate, I mean, let's be honest, the recommendation might come back that it's status quo and then there's no impact at all. You know, that might be what we hear or we get, I mean, but I would anticipate whatever comes to the board, other than that one, there would be a phase in period. And we would do what we try to do, try to be family supportive, family friendly and, and grandfather kids. So I would expect that it would be, I think, virtually impossible for, if there is a, a change, to do it in a year. I mean, and the earliest we could do this would be September 2016 anyway, but I can't believe that we, if there are changes to the way we deliver French immersion to support program viability in both programs, that we would do it in June 2016, 17, the school years 2016, 17, and we'd be done. I think you'd probably be looking two, three, maybe even four-year implementation process, not unlike FDK. I mean, that was a radical change or departure in the way we were doing business, business and a change and the province had a five-year process. You know, whether we'd be five years or not, I don't know. I mean, we, that would, that would form part of our recommendation. Notwithstanding your comments on daycare, I would be cautious a wee bit that we don't make the consultation process so broad that it makes it so difficult to compile the information. Both Trustee Dyson and I have had experience with an extremely broad consultation process and that, did I say trustee Dyson? Superintendent Dyson. No, I promoted her. That was, that was so extensive that it made it very difficult then because there was so much information and we had no control over, and not that we're going to control it, but there was all sorts of duplication. And it was one of the things, it was one of the challenges that I mentioned earlier. Many people thought it was a vote. So, you know, the old adage, when you vote, vote early, vote often, people thought they could do that and, and they were getting the stuff out and getting stuff out and we were inundated with things. And I'm not sure that the information necessarily was the best information we got as a result of that, so.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you Chair. I've always been a supporter of Core French, as you know, and I'm happy to, that we're expanding the program to grade one start. And as someone who's learned English at age 12, I believe I'm a testament that second language can be learned a little bit later on. I have challenged, though, the, the content of the core curriculum, Core French curriculum. And you just reminded me of a discussion that we had at our, our committee meeting and that was to explore increasing perhaps the hours or how the Core French would be delivered in those early grades to really help with the acquisition of the language. So I'm wondering if that's something that is going to be looked at fairly quickly so that that can also be incorporated for consideration for parent feedback in those consultation sessions.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Oliver. Yeah, absolutely, it can be looked at. In fact, one, if you recall, one of the scenarios, we looked at scenario eight and this was Core French only with increased intensity, going from the 40 minutes a week to beyond. There are implications for that, though, and we have to be cautious of, of that. You know, if we go too high, then we've got to, if we make it a, a Core French program, we're going to have to take it from somewhere or we're going to have to teach another subject in French, which, they're both possibilities. I mean, obviously, the latter one is, is probably the more, is the better one. We don't really want to take away from literacy or numeracy to support the program. But yeah, absolutely, it, it, it's on there, so, and, and it can come back at this table, so.
Director Uwali.
I just wanted to comment on this. I was going to do a little bit of a presentation, but it takes Venn diagrams and the Associate Director said no math, so I couldn't do it for you. What, what I tried to describe in, in the Venn diagrams is that if our objective is program viability for both, no one solution may work. It may be an intersection of a couple of ideas that do work. So perhaps extending French, Core French in terms of hours and, and years, in combination with another strategy and whether it be single-track schools or dual-track schools or capping or not capping, it may be a combination that we, we end up with. So we're going to take a look at what are the probabilities of success and success being the viability of both programs in doing any of the initiatives or doing a combination of the initiatives. Now, lots of it will be guesswork because we'd have to find a board with exactly that combination to assess whether it's working or not and would it be valid to assess what's happening in Kitchener compared to what's happening in Halton. It's a different population. So there'll be a lot of guesswork in that, but that's the approach we're going to take.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you very much through you Madam Chair. With respect to consultation again, I think this is a real opportunity for people to dream about what HDSB program viability looks like into the future. And I was just thinking about the student voice in the process and perhaps opportunities to be a little bit creative and, you know, our, our work is pretty serious so much of the time. And I wonder about having some fun with a serious topic and engaging, you know, the arts somehow and it just, just people's real hopes. There's things like sounding boards and scrawl on the wall and all kinds of things that we might consider doing to engage students and, and families just in, you know, separating them from entrenched positions and taking them towards that bigger strategy piece, which is where I really, I, I heard, that's what you said, that's where we really want to be.
Thank you. And maybe student senate should be involved as well as a piece of, did you, there you go. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't let it go. Associate Director Miller's comment about we might want to teach literacy or not taking, taking away from literacy to teach French. Literacy includes the French. French language skills are the acquisition of literacy skills. So just, people often think that French means you're not learning to read, you're learning to, no, you're learning to read in both languages or you're learning to create sentences and grammar in both languages. So just, just to make, not to be personal about it, but it's just that it often comes like that. It's like French or and it's not French or, it's French as a language to learn anything. So it, we can, we can teach them colors and art, et cetera, at the same time as they acquire French language. And that's why sometimes teaching the second subject isn't as hard as one might think.
Through you Chair, through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Point taken. You're, you're absolutely correct. And in fact, there is a body of research out there that, that shows second language acquisition improves with literacy of the first language, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there are no more speakers on the list at this time. So thank you very much for your presentation. We will look forward to more discussion next week. No.
I, I do want to emphasize this. I just, I absolutely want to emphasize this is about program viability. I know there's members of the public behind me. This is about both English and French. This is not about French immersion. It just so happens that the, it's, it's, the increase in uptake of French immersion has had unintended consequences, I think, that none of us around this table could have foresaw, so.
Thank you very much for reinforcing that. So our next item is Board Recognition Report, trustee Al Harrison, report 15082. Trustee Al Harrison, would you like to speak to the report?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just briefly, this report has history now. It was as a result of a motion made back in January. And it came to the board for information and decision previously. And I'm really glad that we were able to take a step back and take some time, engage some additional trustees and members of our committees and our, our staff who work in equity, and come back with a revised proposal. Now, I just, having said that, and the word revised, I just wanted to make note that I did make an omission on page 27, where we describe nominations will be sought across a range of categories, including but not limited to, there's a number of categories there. And then we explain that there's an other category, and this is to recognize that it's a new program. We might have missed something. And really the bottom line here is to be inclusive. So all suggestions will be considered on their own merit. When we heard that at the meeting, I said, I better write it down or I'll forget. And I didn't write it down and I did forget. So that inclusion is in there in the final, more, more recent version. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And then in terms of next steps, just briefly, it's our hope that we, you will consider approving this at our next meeting. And with the principles contained herein, that the ad hoc committee would develop the application form and program launch materials and that those materials would be circulated for consultation, particularly with an equity lens to make sure they're clear and accessible, among other things. And then that the required bylaw amendments and policy piece would come back through the policy bylaw and governance standing committee and then back to, back to the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Vice Chair caller.
I have to say I'm so much more pleased with the report now. And since it has come to trustees on a previous occasion and, and is now in its current format, I would like to suggest that we waive the rules and vote on this tonight if it is the desire of trustees.
I'm seeing a lot of nods, so are you making a motion?
Yes, I am.
So we have a motion to waive the rules to deal with this tonight. Do I have a second or? It was, after the motion's read, you can still have discussion. So trustee Gray, any discussion on waiving the rules? Trustee Gray. Gray, Gray. Sorry, is there any discussion on waiving the rules?
Yes, my, I, I think we all know that generally I don't like to, to waive the rules unless it's, it's very necessary. And, and this is one where I think we could, we could wait the week. So I'll probably vote against, but that doesn't mean that I'm not supportive of all of you voting to, to support it. But that, that's just a personal feeling.
Any other discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes, thank you very much. So I will read the motion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board implement a recognition program reflecting our vision and values and that the required bylaw amendment and policy be developed. Moved by trustee Al Harrison, seconded by trustee Gray. So any discussion? Go back to the speaker control. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes, and the reason why I voted no on the waiving the rules is just because I wanted to make sure we get enough chance to ask a question. But not because I'm against the program. The, I have a question, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Al Harrison. The nugget under the following principles will guide the recognition program. It says we will be a unique program within Halton region. And I just wondered whether you could explain that, whether or not it meant it was a requirement to be unique or whether it was trying to be unique just within other recognition programs within the Halton District School Board? Or whether it was actually trying to be like trailblazing and would only work if it was completely different from everything else? I just, it just struck me kind of, and I was not one of the ones, I trusted you guys to come up with the program, but I just want to make sure how this. Trustee Al Harrison, do you want to respond or?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. And then I would like to share the joy of responding to questions with my fellow trustees that were on the committee. And I should have said that earlier. In terms of the comments around the report, this was not a one person show by any means. So the, the response that I'd like to provide is that we hope that it would be unique from existing programs that are both in our school board and in the region of Halton. We think that it's particularly unique in terms of the inclusion and equity overlay. So that's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Gray. I would also say that it's unique in the way that it's being delivered. There's choice in the delivery, there's choice in the way in which it, it takes place. And it, it matches with really the recipient's desire and their comfort in whichever way that award may be delivered to them, whether it be in public forum or whether it be in the school setting or in the office setting or wherever it is, that that particular person that's going to be honored, wherever they work or study. So I, I think it's unique in, in that way as well. And I think that that combined with what trustee Al Harrison has said does make it indeed a unique program.
Thank you, trustee Al Harrison.
Yes, trustee Gray, thank you for reminding me. One of the things that we were also hoping to do in the unique context is really model what we talk about around differentiated learning. So we were hoping to, you know, we talk about how important that is for our, our students. And we really wanted to model that with this program and through, through choice. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Daniele.
Thank you so much. And actually, that's what I want to say, thank you so much. I know that I was probably one of the biggest pains in the Batucas when it came to developing this. I had opinions, I made them known, I, I spoke loudly, I whined on occasion. I really, really appreciate all the work that went into this. And I think that what you've come out with is an excellent, excellent document and process that will benefit all of our staff, students and stakeholders. So I just, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I know I caused extra work for you, but I'm really, really grateful and will be very, very happily supporting this. Well done.
Thank you, trustee Graves.
Thank you, my comments are very much along the lines of what trustee Daniele just said. I just want to recognize the tremendous amount of effort that I saw go into the, the revisions of, of this report and, and thank everyone involved. It was very detailed. I know they even went back and, and looked at the footage from the meetings and pulled out the notes and addressed every single one. It was, it was very detailed. So thank you for that. And I, I think the, the report is, is much, much better for it. Thanks for all that hard work.
Trustee Gray.
I'd like to say that it's very important to note on page 28 that this in fact is a beginning. It's a work in progress. And I, it's summarized very nicely in the final statement in saying that after running the program for one year, the communications committee will seek broad feedback and explore continuous improvement options to this particular program. And I think that that bodes well because we all recognize that this is in its infancy stage. We will see means by which we might want to have changes. And the fact that that's written right into this whole proposal, I think, bodes well for us in the future to be able to in fact bring it up once again and make those, those tweaks so that we have an even stronger program of recognition here in Holton.
Director Uwali.
Thank you, chairperson. I'm, I'm just wondering about the status. I understand that we are obliged to follow the recommendation. I'm wondering if there is latitude in the procedures that come after the recommendation. I don't think the report is specific to, to that. And in particular, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the second last paragraph on page 27. Those who are selected for recognition will be contacted and invited to provide direction about the preferred format of the recognition. I, I'm thinking that's a little awkward. You've been recognized by the board for this achievement. How would you like to receive that recognition? I think many people would be shy about saying, I want to come to a board meeting. Some, I bet you lots of these people are modest heroes in our system and they want, I'm wondering if we should have, at the time of nomination, maybe indicate how it should be done? Or I don't think we should leave it up to the recipient. But I'm, I don't know if we're bound by all the detail in this, perhaps not. So maybe the committee can work those things out.
My understanding was that that would be something that would be developed in the next phase and on the nomination form potentially. This is nomination for this award and I would like to receive it here without going to the next.
So the nominator would be asked.
Yes. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. And the rationale for that was to demonstrate that the nominator and us as a group have really gotten to know that person and their sensitivities and what makes, what would really make them happy and feel honored, I guess.
I, I like the idea of not nominator, at the nomination stage, making that decision rather than after the award has been decided upon.
Thank you, trustee Papin.
Through the chair, the same, I'd like to echo the sentiments of everyone else that a lot of work has gone into this and it's, it's really great. My question was actually along the same lines as director Uwali with that paragraph, but it had to do more with that sentence, but recipients will receive the award from trustees. And I think that might need some more clarification because if it is at their school, it might be their trustee or if it's here, it would be all of us. So if we could have a bit more clarification on that sentence, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Albert.
In response to the question about what makes this unique, for me, it's, it's the focus on, on the equity that all of our recipients will be considered on the same level. There, there won't be different classifications of awards. That, that, you know, our, our award will be for the recipient and, and not, you know, you got a supreme award, you got an outstanding award, you got an award of merit. They are all an equivalent award and that makes it an equitable honor for each recipient. And, and for me, that was a really big piece of, of why I was so pleased to be able to support this.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through the chair. Just for the record, the wasn't, the question I had was not about what made it unique, but the fact that the principle says it will be unique. And therefore does that cause challenges if somebody then makes it the same as ours and it's no longer unique? It was a, a completely different than the way it's been taken, but I appreciate the fact you've all been able to talk about what makes this unique and it's, it, it helps the conversation. But the point was, having worded it the way it has, it will be unique. For me, as the one who is particular about words, is problematic. But for the rest of humanity, I'm sure the idea is that it will be, knows what, what they mean by that sentence. I, I was just trying not to box everybody in.
Thank you. And seeing no more speakers, I would like to thank all trustees for, for their potential support of this motion because we, it is, I believe it's really important to recognize the staff and students and other people who support our system. And we haven't been doing that as well as we could have in the past. And I'm very happy that we have gone through the different iterations and we've come to something that will be something that will highlight many people within our system. And we have many, I don't, I know somebody said they were all, all stars or, but I think that we have many people that need to be recognized and I think this will be a way of doing it. So thank you. So. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And I also would like to thank trustee Al Harrison and trustee Gray for all their hard work on the committee. I, it was a lot of hard work and a lot of dialogue and a lot of thought that went into this. And I'd like to thank my fellow trustees who also contributed because it just made it better. Thank you.
Our next item is the Board Leadership and Team Development. Trustee Daniele, report 15084 on page 29 of your board package. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. As I said at the beginning, I'm very happy to answer any questions of clarification. I would prefer not to make any other comments that might sway somebody one way or another beyond any questions of clarification, just for integrity's sake. Thank you.
Just a minute, I'm going to reset. So trustee Al Harrison, you're going to have to click in again. Okay. There you go. Trustee Al Harrison.
No, thank you.
Trustee Daniele, I'm very pleased to be able to support your motion. I would like though, that the wording of the motion include what the trip is. You've said $2,000 of the cost of this trip without anywhere in the motion saying what the trip is. So if you could just include that in the phrasing, and I know that you did ask for help on the phrasing prior to submitting this, and I didn't have time to give you assistance at that time, but if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
You, you are absolutely right. It should say to cover the cost of this upcoming reconciliation to that incredibly long word I cannot pronounce, Ontario. And so, yes, I would definitely.
And that forces our chair to have to read it.
Oh. I just refer to it as KI, to be fair.
Trustee Graves.
Yes, through your chair, perhaps to superintendent Feerman, is she here today? Yeah. Oh, there she is. I think for the sake of the, the new trustees, she's right in line with you. For the sake of the, the new trustees, I was wondering if superintendent Feerman could tell us more about the, the board leadership and team development account, where that, that money comes from, what, what the budget line is and, and what that money typically goes to. That would be helpful for us, I think.
Thank you, through the chair.
Through the chair, the budget is under the Board Administration Governance Budget. The budget has been set at $20,000 for the last number of years and their, per year, that's correct. And the type of expenditures that have gone through is when one of the trustees, as the director or the board representative on the OPSVA, when they are attending either the annual general meeting or a labor relations, a meeting, then the expenditures are charged to this board leadership account. Other examples of expenditures that have been supported by the board for this are with respect to student trustees, the Ontario Student Trustees Association, where they are both members and there is an annual membership fee, and also for the trustee mentor that accompanies the students. So, those are the type of expenditures that have gone through over the last couple of years. In 2013, 14, the actual expenditures charged to this budget was $6,471. To date, in 1415, we have approximately $2,600 charged to this budget.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Uh, thank you. Through you to, to the rest of the board. The motion, the recommendation, once we have the trip named, might also be tweaked to say that the trustee would be responsible coming out of their trustee expense budget rather than it leaving it open to the fact that you might actually be personally, personally responsible. So, that, just underlying that it is a trustee expense. And I also wanted to support the fact that I believe that the experience will support your work with the board as well as with OPSBA. I know that for my brief experience last, I think it was spring, it might have been fall, I did a short visit with the Program Department to two First Nations and I got a lot out of it. And it's still factoring into how I deal with the Aboriginal issues here. So, I know that you will bring that back and share it with us. I would only suggest that maybe this should actually be coming out of prior term trustee reserve rather than the Board Leadership and Team Development. My personal view is Board Leadership and Team Development should be for things that are team. And the prior term reserve should be for these kinds of activities that we all want to support and that we in effect are taking our money and supporting rather than, say, board leadership funds. That would be my only suggestion on that. But I hold heartily are supporting the, the idea. I appreciate the fact that, you know, the, the ask isn't even for the whole amount. And we know that you're giving up a lot of your own time to do this. And with your note-taking skills, I'm sure we'll get more out of it than you got out of my visit. Although my, my visit does inform the next report, which I will talk about later. So, anyway, that, that would be my comment on it. I think we, we are, we do have a board meeting next week, so we could wait another week, but I think we could also waive the rules if that's, if, if people are nodding, I, I could definitely suggest that. But I'm wondering whether or not we should change it to taking it out of the higher term reserve account in that, but that's, it's one, it's two pockets of the same bucket, right? So, I mean, it's not that big a deal.
I had Superintendent Feirman.
Through the chair, it's, it's entirely up to, to the, to the trustees. The reserve does have a healthy balance, so certainly that's an area that may be more conducive to this type of motion. The reserve and the use of the reserve is by trustee policy. So, also included in the package this evening is a trustee expense policy. So, it is the trustees that set the policy for the use of the reserve.
Trustee Daniele.
I am willing to make, if, if I'm looking around the table and seeing nods, that they'd like to see the amended to that, I'd be willing to accept that as an amendment from trustee Harvey Hope.
Blame my reasoning. Um, trust, nice to your call at first. Before I get to explain why she's going to.
It's always been my belief that the prior term reserve is to be used for all trustees to attend training together and that the board leadership is specifically for these kinds of one-off initiatives where one trustee or a small group of trustees has an opportunity to participate in a specific kind of training or professional development that not all trustees are able to attend. And that has always been my understanding of the difference between board leadership, where it, the leader of that specific area of education would fall under versus prior term reserve, which I've always believed has been for the benefit of all trustees.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
I believe there is more precedent in using the Board Leadership and Team Development account than there is using prior term reserve. So, I respectfully disagree. I think it's the opposite, but it doesn't actually matter in the long run. We have more money in the reserve than we do have in that team development budget. I, I, and just my opinion, that I, that would, that's, I've explained why, but I, I think it's, it's a precedent-setting kind of thing. It's also a, a request rather than some, something that comes out of one's normal. Going to the OPSBA, going to Ostiago are normal things that happen all the time that can be budgeted for. Prior year term reserves are for things that, okay, now we want to do this, okay, now we want to do that. And I think this particular request is in the latter.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through the chair to trustee Daniele. First off, I'd like to say I think this will be an excellent opportunity for you. And I look forward to hearing, you know, about your experience. But I do have some questions about how this came about. So, if you could tell me when you were invited to visit this community.
Sorry. As, as I said in the note, I believe that I was originally, I need to wear the, pardon? I know I sent it 10 o'clock this morning, just trying to find it again, unfortunately. Let me just, it's been one of those days. I know I have to speak loudly, I'm sorry. To Michelle Pappen, there we go. I have found it. As the timeline, I was initially approached February 2nd. I sent in a formal application on February 20th. I was given conditional approval on that application immediately. Invoiced originally March 13th, orientation calls began May 20th with other educators from and around the country that are also attending. Does that answer the question?
Uh, yeah. And just to follow up, you do mention in there that you have other partners and funders? And I just wondered who they would be.
Other partners and funders for the organization, Third World Canada. And they include the organizers of the trip, the Michel Jean Foundation, Nipissing University, and the Ontario Troium Foundation are all supporters of the organization and the trip.
Thank you.
Trustee Gavins.
Through you, chair. I, I don't actually have a problem with the, the trip at all. You're not acting like the Canadian ment or anything and heading down to Cancun. The only, the only issue I kind of have is just process. You know, I, I just, when you were invited, I think that's when it should have come so that we could, that it, because at this point, I, it, it, it just, it feels awkward. And I appreciate you feel the same way. So, just a future for all of us, I think, if we could just do things before we lay down some cash.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I, and I thought about it and I've been talking since March with my various colleagues about should I do this, shouldn't I do it? And I pretty much made up my mind to self-fund because I feel awkward bringing this. I feel, I, I feel selfish and, you know, I accepted it, I should suck it up and I was fully prepared and I wrote the original checks myself out of my own account without thinking. And then I started realizing that I also, I've, I've been reassigned as the OPSBA ex-aece on to the Aboriginal Council this summer. I'll be self-funding that. I've been asked to go to AMO with the mayor and the councillors from Milton to speak one-on-one with the Minister of Education staff regarding capital issues and programming within Milton. I will be self-funding that. So, I do this every year. I do something along these lines and I've always self-funded, but this year it came to the, the, the point where there was just too much for me to self-fund. That's, and that's when I finally, my, I finally broke down and thought, okay, I'm going to have to ask for some help on this one. And if I get it, that's great. If my colleagues choose that that's not they want it, that's also, I would be quite understanding because I did leave it very late and I have left it very awkward. So, please know I share in the awkwardness.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair to trustee Daniele. Thank you for bringing this to our table so that we can discuss this openly, especially because there's, we're kind of still a new board, so these kinds of policy discussions are very helpful. And I'm really, you've said that you're going, notwithstanding what goings. So, I, I have to tell you, I'm really looking forward to your report. You've done some great reports and I, I, I really appreciate the, the, the learning, the shared learning that you provide our board on, on things you've already done. And I'm really looking forward to this. So, thank you for that. I just really have, I have a hard time supporting this coming from the board leadership, team development. My, my, and perhaps this is where I think we, we as a board need to have a further discussion. My sort of understanding was very much like trustee Harvey hopes, that we would indulge in that fund for the benefit of all at, together and even extending it out towards our superintendents so that we're learning as a group. So, that's sort of my thought process, right or wrong, that's where my thought is. I was, would like to suggest, why wouldn't you consider perhaps going into next year's trustee fund? It starts in September. We have a new slate. Could you not perhaps ask to take it forward rather than taking it from what I thought was a sacred fund for the, the greater good?
Thank you. If I go into that, when you consider that we have 5,000, 1,000 lost to mileage, that's 4,000, take this 2,000.
Sorry. Can I just ask trustee Daniele, just to make, thank you.
My mother taught me to look at the person I was talking to. That would leave me 2,000 for all the OPSBA stuff I need to attend. So, that really, then I would be self-funding the labor relations or something along those lines. Because as the OPSBA's Suntory VP, I have to be at the OPSBA events as well and I've used my, my personal resource account for that. So, if I go into it, then that's just going to move the self-funding off until next spring, really.
Um, thank you for that. It was my understanding that perhaps OPSBA could, could be, I want to say tapped for, if, if this is OPSBA-related or your work is OPSBA-related, whether there, there would be some fund in there. Because I, I really don't know if I would support this coming out of that reserve. I would completely support you going forward or looking for other opportunities to fund it, but I think that my understanding is the policy that there are exceptions that we, we consider, but this is personal development relative to our board.
Completely understand that and I have already spoken with OPSBA and that, that is not available to me.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
So, this is a question that, that may have been answered. So, forgive me if it is. My, my question through your chair to trustee Daniele is, you, you say you were asked to, to attend. My understanding with this particular organization is that it's a, it's a registration process. It's first come, first served basis. So, I was just wondering who it was who approached you to attend and, and in what capacity?
It was forwarded to me for information from one of the other social justice agencies that I work with.
Sorry, I wasn't able to hear that.
It was forwarded to me from one of the other social agencies that I work with, with the suggestion that I apply and attend.
Okay, so, follow-up for, for clarification. So, it was, it was a recommendation that, from someone that, that this would be a good thing for you to, to attend. Could I do a follow-up question and is it at all OPSBA-related or, or is it board-related? That's.
No, it was not OPSBA-related in any way. It is actually through the, my connections I need to wait.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Uh, thank you. Through your chair, it sounds like we all value this experience for trustee Daniele and for her to bring back some of the lessons learned and perspectives and help us shape how we will work with our Aboriginal First Nations students. So, I think the question really remains of where the funds are coming from. Is it the leadership, the Board Leadership Team Development Fund or last year's prior term fund? And maybe it's just a matter of vote. I don't think we're, we're looking at whether trustee Daniele will partake in the experience. It's which fund the money is going to come from.
Well, this will be coming back next week, so maybe some discussion could be had with trustee Daniele around that so she could get a feeling of what people are more comfortable with. And may I suggest the recommendation, actually instead of the trustee, because that means it could be any one of us, actually have your name in it? So, seeing no more speakers, this will be back next week. The next item is the Truth and Reconciliation Report. Trustee L. Harrison, report 15093 on page 31 of your board package. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. So, as per my notice of motion last week, this brief report was prepared in recognition of the work that is just wrapped up by the National Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The intent behind this is to really offer our support to the valuable work that our staff are doing in this area and really call attention to it. I saw a, a report of People for Education recently, which says that 47% of secondary schools and 29% of elementary schools report they offer professional training for teachers surrounding Indigenous issues. And this report included responses from 1,196 Ontario principals. So, 29%. I know we're doing great work, but I really feel like that work needs to be amplified and, and supported. First Nations, Métis, and Inuit students must see themselves and their history reflected accurately and honorably in our schools. I think that there's a great tie-in to our multi-year plan, which I should have written in here, but I didn't, specifically related to inclusion and supportive learning. It supports specifically student goals 1 to 3, staff goals 1 and 2, and system goal number 4, in my estimation. Reconciliation calls for personal, community, and, and national action. Recognizing that big reports like this take governments years and years to implement, I feel like we don't have and we shouldn't take years and years at the community level to do this. Survivors of residential schools acted with courage and determination during the truth and reconciliation process. We should do no less. School boards, families, and individuals are really an important part in this reconciliation. I've quoted the sections of the report that relate specifically to education. I've quoted a university professor, Susan Dixon, who contends that education is the key because we really need to know what we're reconciling about. And at this point, Canadians really aren't sure. So, that, that's really the premise and the base from which this, this comes. I am. I understand that I myself am not, uh, a First Nations person. I understand also that we don't have, uh, First Nations persons on our, our board at this point in time. So that piece of diversity is, is not, um, recog- recognized here. But I really, I, I spoke to First Nations persons in the creating of this and I'm hoping that, uh, that voice is, is reflected. I took advice and I made changes. I was pointed out that I in fact had some paternalistic, uh, wording in here, which has, has been removed to, to reflect that piece. So I'm hoping that, uh, my colleagues will see fit to support this at this time. Um, and again, it's really just calling attention to the great work that our staff is doing uh, and lending our support and seeking additional support to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I point out to trustees that the, um, motion in the board package is actually not the correct one. The correct one actually for number, um, I is foster and continue to develop a culture where all students gain knowledge of residential schools and their effects in Aboriginal communities of Canada and see themselves as contributors to reconciliation. The, that was, this is the prior version. So the, the updated one will be in the package for next week. So the trustees are aware. The fir- next speaker is Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I am so pleased to see you bring this. I think this is a really, really important motion. And I just wanted to tell you that, um, last week, uh, when I was at the AGM, I did, we had two meetings of the Aboriginal Council. And, um, in the roundtable we had where we all went around and talked about what had been going on. It looked awkward because I can't talk about what's going on in my reserve because I don't have a reserve. But, uh, to be able to, I pulled this motion up and I read it in its entirety. And, um, you got standing ovation from around the table. Uh, for the First Nations trustees around the province, asked me to please extend to you their gratitude for putting this motion together. And, um, they spoke very, very highly of it. Um, they feel that it very much goes in place with not only the Charter of Commitment to First Nation Métis and Inuit education that we, um, committed to last year, I believe it was. But also that particular Aboriginal council that I'm on has created the, uh, OPSA advocacy paper for mandatory First Nation Métis and Inuit components in Ontario Social Studies and History Curriculum, um, as a project of OPSA's First Nation Council. And so they saw this as a perfect tie-in and the fact that they're seeing boards doing this of their own initiative just helps support the work that they're doing. So I wanted to pass that along to you that not only are you affecting work here for our students and our trustees and our parents and stakeholders, you're, you're actually having a wider ripple effect in the province. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
I'm very pleased to be able to support this and, um, it's something, it's been a long time coming. I, I can't even begin to tell you what, what a wonderful read it is. Want to read your words, to read your motion, to reflect on the ideals and the thoughts that went into it. It's very, very well-written and I'm so happy to be able to support it.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee L Harrison. As I alluded to earlier, um, when I was in the radio, hearing the, in the car, listening to the radio a few weeks ago about the Truth and Reconciliation Report, it kind of triggered off a G, um, after that experience I had last fall and how it affected me and watching other documentaries, et cetera, wanting to do something. And, you know, a couple of days later, uh, you, you presented, circulated your first draft and it went, oh yeah, that's great. I'm glad she's doing it because we're so busy right now. And it's wonderful that you had the time to pull this together. And, uh, one of the things that we learned, um, at, at other OPSA conferences and at Board of Directors where they've made, um, motions that ask the government to make sure that the curriculum is to include Aboriginal education and to, to infuse it through all JK through 12. It, it's just building this acknowledgement that we need to do something in the education system because we need to educate, um, the next generation of students. Uh, one of the things, one of the ideas that pops up a lot is that they tell us that we are all treaty people. We may not be from First Nations, uh, but we are all treaty people. The treaty is between two groups and we are part of the other group. If you're not by any chance also part of the, the other group, it could be on both sides. So that's one idea to keep in mind in that. Um, and I, I noticed that it's in it in part three about the, to include treaty education. But that's really important because, um, a lot of students don't understand when they hear, listen to the news and they hear about treaty differences. They don't really understand it because it's a lot different than, say, you know, LA law or the things they see on TV about courts and those kinds of things. So they don't quite understand that. So treaty education is really important. The other thing is we had a speaker at the OPSA conference this weekend about, um, this John Ralston-Saul and was talking about how history is being rewritten and that, um, most children, you know, they, they, they learn about history in certain blocks of centuries. And it's sort of like Canada just sort of started. And we, they often forget the part where, you know, the continent was here before. Whatever 13, 14, whatever the, 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 the people arrived from the east. And they don't often talk about that. Funny thing is I, I found my, my documents from school, what I learned way back when I was in Quebec. Die children, I looked through it and I realized my children had learned the same thing. So again, different provinces teach different things and how they teach it. Um, I asked my son, so he's, you know, what, what, what did you learn? And to turn a test this, what do kids learn? And, and I think we really have a hole and we need to fill it. And this is a first step. And so I wholeheartedly support it. And I'm looking forward to seeing what curriculum comes for the province. But even in the meantime, there are programs and things we can do to infuse it in the system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you. I also wholeheartedly, uh, support this. I, I think it's wonderful. Uh, and in the interest of, of making sure that, that this is, uh, authentic, I, I, I wanna make sure that, um, that we're, we're doing more than paying lip service to this, uh, issue. And I, and I really do see that reflected here. I, I'd like to invite comment, uh, perhaps from the director or perhaps from Trustee L Harrison, whichever is appropriate. Uh, that number one, uh, because it doesn't right now have a concrete, uh, aspect to it. We commit that all students graduate with the knowledge of residential schools and their effects on Aboriginal communities.
Trustee Graves, that's not the right. It's been changed. I'll resend it.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you. But I, I think my comment is gonna be. I think my comment will be relative even if that has changed a little bit. I, I'm looking, uh, for what's that going to look like, uh, in practical terms? My children are in elementary school. I'd like them to have this knowledge before they graduate. Are there next, uh, steps to, to that number one? Uh, and, and how might that, that look?
Yeah, I'm, I'll respond to the modified, uh, recommendation. And, and Trustee El Harrison, um, went through this with me with the modifications. And I think we can, we can provide, uh, richness to that, that concept of, uh, allowing our students greater exposure to the whole issue and also embracing the concept that they need to be part of the solution to the, to the issue as well. We'll analyze the curriculum in elementary and see where it best fits. Uh, I think there is opportunities within that curriculum to, to do as suggested in the motion. In secondary, it's a little more difficult because the history curriculum is, the mandatory history course is grade 10. And it does not cover, uh, I don't think it covers this period nor this topic. So we may have to find different strategies there as well. Uh, but we will, we will embrace the, the motion and, and we will do what we can to impart the wisdom that this suggests.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gerbence.
Through you, Chair. I would, uh, again, uh, echo, thank you, echo what everybody around the table has said. Um, this is, uh, this is, uh, truly, um, a great motion. And I would actually ask that there, in some way, can we have a, kind of a, a report back with regards to what is, what has actually been implemented like in a year or something like that?
I'll just respond to that. Uh, it would, it should then perhaps incorporate that in the motion as well with a report back on a certain day. We use these motions to build our reports for next year.
And that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Uh, thank you through the chair. I'd just like to ditto that. Um, I appreciate, uh, the, the, the motion. And, um, I think it's, uh, wonderful that we're respecting, that we're reflecting, uh, some of our students who, who are in the Halton District School Board. You know, we've been told that we want to, um, see, let students see a reflection of themselves. And this to me, um, is, is, is moving in that direction, uh, as well as educating us all. I mean, as someone had said, we're rewriting the history that we all learn. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Pathan.
Thank you through the chair. Um, I just wanted to touch on a comment you made, um, regarding not making it political and, and the perception that it may be. If you could just touch on that a bit, I'd like some explanation.
Absolutely. So, um, the comment I think goes back to our session that we were all able to, uh, take part in around, uh, white privilege. Um, and I'm particularly aware of cultural appropriation. Um, and stand, I guess, in my own bias and power position as, as a white person. So I wanted to just say that I'm aware that there could possibly be a perception that I'm tabling this for political gain. However, um, the reasons for doing it are, uh, not that. Um, and I felt that since we don't have First Nations representation on our board sitting with us that, um, and given that the Truth and Reconciliation Committee, Commission just wrapped up, that the time was right for us, that do sit here to take that leadership piece and harness it and move forward. But to do so, uh, in consultation with or reflecting the First Nations, uh, voice, uh, through our equity staff. So just to, uh, have that lens over it. I hope that helps. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Trustee Gerbence.
Can I actually make a formal move to amend the motion? We'll come back.
It's not on the floor, so it could be amended for the next meeting. You could, um, speak to Trustee L Harrison and see if she would like to make an amendment before it comes back next week. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Um, following up on, uh, what the director said about, um, and, and the motion that says foster and continue to develop a culture. Um, I'm wondering whether or not, um, it would be appropriate to perhaps put some money where our mouth is and wonder whether or not, um, when, when this motion gets rejigged just a little about a report coming back and whether or not it could include, um, some what we already do. And whether or not in that process of coming up with that, whether or not, um, i- i- if it becomes appropriate, asking for, uh, an enveloping kind of thing or whatever. I mean, even if it was a, uh, a, not a token, but a, uh, a, an acknowledgement of what is already in the budget and how one is going to spend it.
Yeah, I think the timing is, is quite good because, uh, we'll work on this early in September in terms of developing some plans for the implementation of the motion should it pass next week. Uh, and you know that in October or November, we have our possibility of a surplus that may be able to fund some, some activities. And it's likely that if we want to truly enhance this program, then we may have to, um, pay for speakers, or other resources, uh, to deliver it. So, you know, if the timing is good.
Thank you. And I also believe that part of the motion is asking the ministry to provide school boards with resources to develop and share best practice that support reconciliation. So. So this will be back next week. Thank you very much. So our next item is Capital Priorities Report. Uh, Superintendent Bierman, Mr. Ranzella, report 15092 on page 34 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Bierman and Mr. Ranzella. When you're ready.
Thank you. Through the chair, um, this evening we are presenting a recommendation of the, uh, projects that we would like to submit as part of the ministry's request for capital priorities. As has been discussed at prior meetings, we have been waiting for the ministry to provide this opportunity for quite a while. And there are deadlines attached. And the report does provide quite a bit of information with respect to the projects we will be, that are included in the recommendation for submission. And at this point, I'll ask Mr. Ranzella to provide a little bit more information with respect to that.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, the report itself outlines the projects that, uh, we are proposing to submit to the ministry. The deadline is July 15th. The ministry's request, uh, for capital priorities was sent out May 26th and this was the quickest we can get this to you. Uh, however, I, I do want to point out that we've been, as trustees are aware, you've approved the LTAP and a majority of the projects have come out of the long-term accommodation plan. What we have done is, uh, reviewed the requirements or, or the needs based on, uh, on what the ministry requests, accommodation pressures, school consolidations, which we don't have any of at this point in time. Facility condition, and there was also information regarding French language accommodations for French language boards. As you can see, in October of 2013, we applied for a number of projects. We've got, we received funding for three. And then in this year's capital priorities project, we're requesting funding for seven projects of which, uh, the first five ha- are, are taken from the long-term accommodation plan. They're all accommodation pressures. Uh, they include the addition to Craig Kilburger, Alton Village, Milton Southwest number 10, Oakville Northeast number two, uh, Milton Southwest number one. We've also added two new projects based on facility condition. They are Brookville Public School and Montclair Public School, the both rebuilds. These were based on, um, again, the ministry's requirement or request for funding for schools that basically, once you look at renewal needs, uh, and the cost, it's probably cheaper or same price to replace the facility. And, uh, in discussions with facility services, the best way to kind of address those projects would be through the Facility Condition Index. There's a description in the report as to what it means. But generally speaking, anything over 65% historically has been a prohibitive, pretty prohibitive to repair, uh, project. Uh, we use that as the baseline as to what to apply for. And the two schools that came out were, uh, Brookville and Montclair. I do want to point out, uh, that as, as well as part of the process, um, the ministry has also released funding for, um, childcare centers. And, uh, as part of the submission, we will also be requesting to, uh, jointly with, uh, the region of Halton, Director of Child Serv- Children's Services, uh, funding for childcare centers at, uh, both the New Milton number 10 Public School and Northeast, uh, Oakville Public School. I'm glad to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
And you do have some questions. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to, um, Manager Ranzella. Two questions. The, uh, Montclair Public School that is on the rebuilt list has a portion of it that is rather new, coming out of Park 16D. So is the idea that the rest of the school would be rebuilt? I would presume we're not, right? I mean.
I, we just followed what the FCI was on the facility and using that percentage. Again, it's, it's a request. Given our experience with the ministry, they're not going to fund, I'm, you know, maybe a pessimist, they're not going to fund all seven projects. So, at this point in time, I would assume, and Mr. Superintendent could probably expand on, on it, but it's based on this Facility Condition Index, which is, which involves reviews of the, the facilities themselves and would have likely included any renovations to the school.
Thanks. Thank you to the trustees. Mr. Ranzella has outlined the process as some of it occurred in the past. So, there's actually not a formal prohibitive to repair program at this point in time, other than the fact that the ministry has now named the condition as a potential reason that they would consider rebuilding or modifying a school. The 65% figure was, in fact, the number that the ministry used when they had their own prohibitive repair program several years ago. And the ministry has made it clear that they do recognize that lots of boards have lots of older schools, and it's, it's almost bordering on our close the gap approach wherein they're going back and looking at what they can do with some of the existing facilities. And they have, in fact, identified, I think it was an additional $750 million for new schools, 750 for consult, or for the consolidation of schools. So, they're trying to, I think, categorize the dollars into areas where they think boards can actually access those particular dollars. The question about what would actually happen on the site, you're correct, there's a brand new addition on, on that location. We have not gone anywhere near the point where we're talking about a design or a concept at this stage. We'd have to have all those conversations as we move forward. But it, there are only two schools on the current record of the assessments that the ministry has done that would be within the range of the former 65% figure, and therefore, they're both submissions that we've put forward. I think, again, Mr. Ranzella has pointed out, we're really not going in with an incredibly heavy ask, although it sounds like seven projects. We have, I think, some concerns about the sites, or the, the locations where we don't have sites yet, may or may not rank as highly as we'd like them to. Of course, we'll make the case with the ministry as best we can about the fact that Halton is growing so fast and that, you know, time is of the essence and those types of things. And I think we've been fairly successful in that in the past. But I think this is another avenue that the ministry has identified for projects of this nature, and we haven't really got a specific design and answer to, to that particular question.
So, the 65, when you're saying the 65% number, I mean, I remember the FCI index was sort of a point in time. So, so it's still at qualifies now with the FCI, even with part of the building being renovated. So, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, I, weren't using old information.
If I may, through the Chair, maybe I'll take a minute for trustees that aren't familiar with the, the approach that the ministry did use. The Facility Condition Index is a way in which the ministry has measured the, the general overall condition of a building. It does not compare that building to a new building. So, if we were to take one of our existing 1960s vintage buildings and compare it to a new school, there'd be an immediate shortfall. The ministry does not do that. They take the 1960-ish building and compare it to itself. If it had a boiler, what vintage is that boiler and when should it be replaced? If it had a roof, what's the age of the roof and when will that replace? So, it doesn't look to things like air conditioning and network capabilities, ventilation rates, and those types of things. So, the, the measure that they use is very limited in its nature. So, when they talk about the 65% figure, what they've actually done is said, over the course of some period of time, and there are three windows, I believe, they've used, the immediate one-year, the five-year, and I think the 20 or 25-year spectrum. If you did nothing to the building over 25 years, you would anticipate that every element in it is now 25 years old, due to be replaced. If you put a dollar value on each of the pieces, you'd probably come up with a fairly high percentage of the value of the building that then has to be replaced, and that's the 65. So, when you hit that, now that we have to spend 65% of the value of the building, it's deemed to be in a state that they would think needs some attention. Now, it's highly unlikely that any board would not do something to a school over that period of time, so the number does consistently change. And if I go back to the analogy we've used a few times, if the building is only worth five bucks, 65% of five bucks isn't much. That's the challenge we have when they use the FCI. So, we've used it for the purposes of putting these two projects forward for a couple of different reasons. We think it, it will have some traction with the ministry around their former criteria. And we think that given particularly the location of one of the schools, there's nothing in the immediate area, there's really nothing planned to occur in that area. So, it may be an opportunity for us to truly address the, close the gap on a, on a, basically, whole school level, if you will.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. My question is on the same topic, and I just wanted to confirm what I think I heard, and that is that there are no other schools in the system that are at above or in and around that 65% mark? And if I was incorrect, and there are others, I just wondered about a sense of how many others might be in that prohibitive to repair bunch. Thank you.
When we looked at the FCI Condition Index, we looked at the, a five-year analogy, our analysis, and basically, those are the only two that exceeded the 65%.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to Mr. Ranzella. When I'm looking at the Southwest Mount Number 10 school, I, of course, am concerned about the no site designated as secondary plan not approved. I trust how we, we've been in this situation in the, the past and that, that we can show via numbers the, the need for that school. But I just want to ask about how, how big of a problem is that? And what are the next steps that need to happen before a site can, can be found? And do you have a rough idea of how long that will take?
The issue in both Milton and Burlington, and that's why you look at the timeframe in which we're proposing the opening of these schools in terms of 27, 2018 for both North, for Milton and North Oakville, is as a result of some real significant delays at the municipal approvals stage. They're not approving a lot of new residential development, mainly because of some ongoing issues with environmental issues and, in particular, conservation, Halton, just ensuring that everything's done accordingly and meeting all those. So, relatively speaking, there's been some approvals, but not enough. They've kind of slowed things down in order to manage these environmental concerns. So, I know we're not getting to the school sites, but neither are the new residential developments happening. It is high on the priority, whenever we're at meetings with the town, to say we need to ensure that schools are within the next phases of development. We hope that Milton Number, I think in the next round of approvals for development, Milton Number 10 will be in there. But we're having issues with them not creating enough, they're, they're just, the time blazes in, in their approvals for subdivisions. I know the developers are anxious to get going, but they've really kind of slowed things down in, in both communities.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to Mr. Ranzella. In one of our earlier reports tonight, I think there was an indication that there was a, a project put forward but was not funded because the site was not secured. And so, I'm wondering why we would put on our list of priorities three sites or three proposed schools where we have no site yet. Will that likely be funded as a, you know, when we do acquire the site?
I think we have to be proactive. The ministry is fully cognizant of the growth in both Milton and Oakville, and they have in the past given us funding for schools where we've had no sites. And a good example is Boyne Public School. And as well as Northeast Oakville, Number 1, Udonawee, we did not have school sites, but they really understood that they were imminent and, and they gave us the funding. And there is, of course, a lead-up time for it. And that's why, again, we're looking at 2018, 2019. We, we believe we'll, we'll secure sites in the next year in order for us to start construction and have a school open for the September 2018 start date.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the Chair, to Mr. Ranzella. Thank you for the report. I'm wondering if you might be able to elaborate a little bit, because some of our communities, when they read this report, may be wondering why their school wasn't considered. And I'm thinking here, Tom Thompson, which is experiencing a lot of pressures in population. And I know, I realize that it says, "Projects related to only addressing an accommodation pressure of a specialized or alternative program such as French immersion will not be considered." And I'm wondering if you could explain to them and to us, is that ministry-directed or is that board, school board-directed? And, and why, why were, were they're not being considered?
The, again, the roadmap for, for the capital priorities is the long-term accommodation plan. As outlined in the, of the long-term accommodation plan, as well as this evening in Associate Director's, Miller's Program and Viability Report, there may be some decisions made through that process that may impact on some of these schools that are currently overcapacity in terms of portables on-site. So, and that's been stipulated in the report. So, the outcomes of the PVC or the PVR report is going to be, will impact on what's going to happen in these, in some of these communities, not only Tom Thompson, we, you know, we have accommodation pressures at John T. Tuck, but also, as outlined in the LTAP, although not in detail, and E.J. James, you know, there may be some opportunities that, you know, as a result of the decisions, that we may have to do some, some boundary reviews and shuffling and relocation of programs and students. So, I think that's, that needs to come forth before we move forward with any form of, of recommendation to the ministry in terms of, of additions. And secondly, and as well, when we looked at, at our long-term accommodation plan, we do have, in some of these instances, you know, available capacity in neighboring schools. And, you know, at this point in time, we haven't done any boundary changes, mainly as a result to find out exactly what's going to come out of this Program of Viability Report. So, you know, until that comes about, I, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be prudent on our part to, to make submissions for additions.
Thank you. Trustee Pathan.
Thank you, through the Chair, to Mr. Ranzella. My question has to do with, you've identified two schools that are over 65%. And I'm just curious about schools that are just on the cusp, that would be between 50 and 60%. Do you have any idea of those numbers?
There are a number of schools. We have Mohawk Gardens, Robert Little, Lesterby Pearson, Centennial, Glenview, White Oaks Secondary School North, Georgetown District, for whatever reason, McKenzie Smith, Robert Bateman, Pine View, WI Dick. Those are all, all over 50%. And now, we're talking not right now, but within five years. So, we used a five-year analysis.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Changing the subject a little bit to childcare. The submission says that we're asking for the two new schools to have childcare, but it doesn't give a lot of detail on what that might look like or what it is you're actually asking for in, you know, dollar-type amounts. I'm, I'm supposing that similar to school, I have a school in my neighborhood, St. Luke's Catholic School, that when, you know, I don't know how many eons ago of rule changes, when you had to have daycare in new builds, they put a daycare center on, as a wing of that school. And I'm assuming that's kind of what we're looking at. But I just thought I'd, I'd ask the question and whether or not the report that you send will eventually at some point come back to the trustees so we know what it looks like that you think that you're asking for to add on. I mean, I know we're not the sketch plan phase yet, and I'm sure it will be in the design guidelines, but I'm wondering how that's going to look.
As you can well imagine, when we received this on May 26th, we really had to scramble. And we, Superintendent Padra Barak and myself and Superintendent Cullen met with the region on this, along with our Co-Terminus Board, looking at where and if, where we can locate these schools, these daycare centers. We are working with them at this point in time as to what their needs are in terms of size, how many spaces. So, those will come out in the wash. We just need to get, and, and the expectation from the ministry is to provide some general agreement from both the, the region as well as the respective boards that these are where we're requesting. The likelihood of us getting both, I don't know. I know there's been some discussions that it may not happen, but we're just putting our requests in. So, the details will come out if and when we get approval from the ministry. I don't know if Superintendent Padra Barak would like to add to that.
I can't. I mean, just to, to put it within context, the, the total funding is $40 million per year over the next three years. So, when you're talking capital for the whole province, it doesn't go very far. So, you know, we're, we're hoping to get approval of one, maybe, maybe two of the sites, but that, that's just us speculating. It's not a huge amount of money. I think it's designed to get a pilot or a single site anchored in, in various regions across Ontario.
Thank you. And seeing no more questions, this will be back next week. Thank you very much. So, our next item is the Community Planning Partnerships Policy. Trustee Graves, report 15095. Trustee Graves, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you. I'll say a few words that will apply to the, the, these next three policies. Many thank you to all of the trustees for, for your hard work and input in, in all of these. The policy bylaw and governance meetings were well-attended, and there was plenty of discussion and, and lots of, of great input on, on all of these. So, I'll, I'll be happy to, to answer questions as they arise. However, these really came from, from all of you, so you probably know the answers as well as I. Thank you.
And Mr. Ranzella is here as well, if there's any questions around the community partnership policy. Thank you, Mr. Ranzella. Trustee Gervens.
Through you, Chair. The motion is, mentions a, a period of at least 25 days. I caution us to be consulting with the public for input over the summer holidays, just because there's not a lot of people around and are we really getting a true consultation?
Can you speak, can you say that again and louder?
Because... Of course I can. Is this better? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? I, I just, speaking to the motion that, I know it says at least 25 days, but I would, I, I'm cautious to have this out during the summer, just because I don't know if we're really going to get the public consultation that we'd like on this. Or I don't want to be, I don't want the board to be seen as trying to slip something by the public because they're just not around.
I don't know if there's any time urgency, but the second motion says it comes back in October. Potentially, it depends on when we need the community partnership policy back. Does it have to be back in September? Could it be October? Trustee Carter.
The 25 days that we post is supposed to be 25 school days, so summer wouldn't count. I, I remember we had this extensive conversation. The policy doesn't say it, but we had this extensive conversation about this in, in policy bylaw and governance in the last term.
Just to clarify...
Just to clarify, I, I, you're absolutely right. We did have an extensive discussion on this, but we did not pass the policy. So, you're right, our intent is 25 school days, or I, I think it was two successive board meetings, actually. And I thought it was 30 days. Without a policy being passed, we did a, we did a...
So, Director Uwali or Mr. Renzella, the community partnership policy, if it doesn't come back until October 2015, is that a problem?
I, I'll speak to that. I mean, the urgency here is that this is a very important policy because it contributes to our planning and our possible accommodation reviews and our possible parks. However, I don't see a harm in posting it now. There is at least half a month left in, in June. And perhaps we will post it into September and bring it back to the board and the, the second board meeting in September, if that's a reasonable compromise.
So, we could have that change for the next meeting to say the second board meeting in September?
Yeah.
Are you on here? Okay. Yeah, I didn't reset, I'm sorry. Trustee Gray.
I would just support what Director Uwali has said, because really, the, the motion does read for a period of at least 25 days. And I know the intent may have been, at one time, that days are counted as school days, but given that it reads at least 25 days, it could be posted very shortly and go right through the summer and then the input collected for the beginning of September. Again, always looking for that longer period of time and greater effort at reaching out to our public.
Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
Given that September, the meetings in September are likely to be very early in September, like, if we meet on the first and third Wednesdays, we're looking at the second and the 16th. Is the 16th enough time? That's not even 25 school days, like, which was the original intent of, of a long time ago's discussion. I mean, that's only 10 school days. And I'm thinking that's not long enough, unless this needs to get done much more quickly than that. I'm really not comfortable. I'd far rather see it come back the first meeting in October, which is the 7th of October. It's fully three weeks later.
Chairperson, I see the manager, senior manager nodding, so I am taking that as he's all right with this. So, the first meeting in October will be fine.
Okay. For some reason, Trustee Reynolds was on, up on the list, and then she jumped. So, I'm going to call Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Chair. That was kind of you. I, I'm thinking I did that, but I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to echo the comments here. I'm very grateful for this extension. I was going to actually ask, ask that we move that timetable for a couple of reasons. We have community partners that don't meet over the summer. And so, in September, they'll be meeting. It would be interesting for them as well. Our policy, PBNG, policy byline governance, it doesn't meet till September 22nd and October 14th, so it's, it's, it's good. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, now you can take yourself off the list. Trustee Graves.
Good. I'm happy to, to have that amended to October 2015. And though I don't, I don't personally like to waive the rules, this could be one instance, if, if people are agreeable. I don't see any harm in, since this is just for public consultation, if we do waive the rules for this evening, then it gets out to the public faster, and I would be quite happy to support that. Shall I move that? So moved.
I have a seconder. Trustee Gray. Okay, is there any discussion on waiving the rules?
Order, I guess. I'm the last person, well, I was when I looked last time. Now, there's someone else on the, the discussion list, and this is going to, so how does that work?
You, you will still get an opportunity to speak to the motion if you would like to. I haven't gotten rid of the list. We're just going to put it on the floor. So, we're, we're on waiving the rules right now? Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, I have the wrong one? Oh, sorry. I discouraged that one. Just a minute, got to do it again. You're confusing me. Okay. All right, I did it right. Don't confuse me too much, okay? It's getting almost 10 o'clock. Okay, so I'm going to read the motion, and then we'll have some discussion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board posts the draft community partnership policy as appended to Report 15095 on the board website for a period of at least 25 days, soliciting public input, and that the policy and any input returned to the board for consideration at the first board meeting in September, or October, sorry, I have it written down, it's in October 2015. Moved by Trustee Graves, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Discussion, just a minute, let me go back. So, Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. And it was mostly for information, because what I had to say doesn't, isn't affected by whether the motion's on the table. Just for clarity, the 25 days was to ensure that one did not schedule three consecutive board meetings, meaning 21 days, and get the thing passed without having sufficient time for it to be out in a couple of packages, and people would have time to actually absorb posting. So, that's where the 25 came from versus 21, or two board meetings, or three board meetings. Three board meetings could be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if someone got really kind of aggressive. So, that was where the 25 days come from. So, but now, it, it's a moot point for this particular one. It may come up for some of the other ones in that we now have more than enough time between now and October to have people read it. But I just wanted to make it clear on that was where that came from.
Thank you, Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. My question is, what does that posting or consultation look like? So, we post it on the website, and how do we let people know that it's there so they can comment? Thanks.
Director Uwali.
It is posted in a special spot on the website as, as policies under consideration. I think that's the tag, under review. It, it may form part of, it forms part of the minutes of the meeting. It, it also may form part of, of press, media, I hope I get the right terms, news release informing the public.
And Twitter.
And Twitter. And blogged and tweeted.
Thank you. And seeing no more questions, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Renzella. So, the, is there any question? Is there any questions or comments regarding the trustee honoraria policy? Or?
No.
Well, it says trustee honorari-
Trustee Amos, we're doing expenses next, but I have one question, just a clarification.
Trustees' expense or trustee honorary?
One clarification for next week's project, package. I believe there may have been more bolded than should have been in the trustee expenses, and that just may have been a, a slip of the mouse, because four, it says in the revisions, 4.8, 4.11, and something else. There were three sections that were being looked at, and I think the parts in between got bolded, because I'm pretty sure there were no changes on some of those other ones. So, just to, just to be clear in the next one, if only those paragraphs that we actually, I mean, renumbering, I don't consider to be a reason to bold. So, if that's, that was my only comment on that one.
Thank you, trustee, oh, she's come and she's gone. Trustee Collard.
I circulated to trustees earlier today a suggestion that a small amendment be made to Section 4.9 to ensure that people were clear that transportation is covered under 4.8 and not under 4.9, because in conversation with Superintendent Veerman, she was very concerned that there would be confusion. And where there's confusion, that always leads to headaches and hassles, filling out the forms and putting things in the right columns and, and so forth. And so, I had sent out some wording suggestion for that, if I can find it. Always seemed to have way more in my inbox than I thought I should have. It, it may have been around that time. I sent out, I sent it out with a bunch of the, new version of the trustee forms.
June 17th, 11 a.m. is what I'm finding.
Yeah, there it is. And so, I, I would like to add, "Transportation claims will be paid based upon Section 4.8 of this policy," to add that clarity, so that our business people don't have any confusion. Yes, it, it would go at the end of Section 4.9. "Transportation claims will be paid based upon Section 4.8 of this policy."
Thank you, Trustee Harvey Hope.
The only other point I had circled on here was, I don't recall that we saw it off on one month in 4.11, but because, again, we don't always get our statements within a month, so, and we are then putting ourselves in a stricter sense than the rest of the employees for their expenses. So, one month is really tight for those things we, which we get monthly statements for. I mean, I know in some cases, if I miss by one day, that expense might not show up on something I can submit for 37 days or whatever it is till I get the next statement. So, I don't, I think one month is a little tight. I seem to recall, we, we, we had left it at the six months that it was originally, but, you know, three months I could saw off on, but one month I will never make. So, I will just say it now, I will have trouble, and it will be best efforts, and I will always fail, and I don't think it's fail to set me, myself up and some of the rest of you to always fail. So, I mean, I will do a better effort on the year-end and the accruals, but the rest of the time, I think it's going to be problematic to leave it at one month. And you, you, my fellow trustees, value my judgment as an accountant, this is one of those times.
Well, maybe there could be some general discussion so that it could come back at the next board meeting with maybe a modification there, because I would agree with you. Trustee Papen.
Do we need a motion to extend past 10 o'clock?
For making that motion? Do I, do I have a seconder? Trustee Gervens, is it on our voting? Nope, just a minute, got to go back. Okay. Okay, so, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you. So, go back to speakers. Okay, Trustee Papen, did you have anything else? Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Also, while we're changing this policy, the Chief Information Officer, part of 5.2, I'll just throw it out there, that, that position is changing, and I don't know if we know enough about it yet, but at some point, we need to figure out who's going to update schedule, schedule.
Trustee Graves.
Yeah, in the policy bylaw and governance meetings, we, we had considered three months, and it went kind of back and forth, we considered various times. I believe the, the one month came down to conversations with, with staff and what would be easiest for, for staff to do the turnaround on. And, and you'll note that it says in that section, "Trustees will make best efforts to submit claims for expenses within one month." So, it is, it is strongly encouraging us to do it within one month, with the recognition that, that might not always happen. But if I could, I would like to give Superintendent Veerman an opportunity to comment if she so wishes.
Superintendent Veerman?
Through the chair, the reason that there was a recommendation to include a timeline was, in the prior term, some expenditure, expenses were submitted very late, and sometimes five, six months at a time. So, it does put additional pressure on the staff that is preparing the monthly summary, and especially as we get to the end of the year, wanting to ensure that things are reported in the proper time period.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up? Okay. Seeing as there's no more speakers, this will return next week. So, there's, now we're on to the honoraria schedule. Is there any comments or questions regarding that? And you have to click in again, I reset. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Okay. I just had a question about, a March revision date is also noted, and it's not noted. So, can somebody explain to me what that was about in the report? The second line of the report, the second sentence of the underneath recommendation, it says, "The effective date on Schedule 1 is the start of the current board's term," which is meaning retroactive December 1st, but then it says a March date is noted, but in the accompanying policy, there's no March. It might have been when we changed the stars, but I'm...
I believe it means the policy was revised in March. Policy does not have last revised March on it, on the actual policy, so one or the other needs to change to make it match. Okay, so it'll come back without the March in. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then it will come back next, next meeting. Our next item is the policy schedule amendment. No, no, we did that, sorry. The gifted accommodation for Oakville, Superintendent Zonfeld, Report 15087, on page 53 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Zonfeld, and when you're ready.
Good evening, trustees through the chair. Before you have the report, this has come up upon us fairly quickly in terms of enrollments that we didn't anticipate for WH Morden School in Oakville, and therefore, staff, we've had to adjust our accommodations. And after considering several options, feel that we've come up with a, a good solution to this challenge we have in terms of accommodation. So, you have the report before you, a few minor clarifications, corrections for you. One is that it's actually, in the report, we've said that there's the need for... One is that it's actually, in the report, we've said that there's the need for two portables on site, it's actually three more that are needed, and only two can be accommodated, so that's just a minor correction there. And in terms of the two charts you have there, it might be, it might appear that where are we putting the Pilgrimwood Grade 5 students? In the Pilgrimwood chart, it shouldn't have what's in brackets on the last column, where it says Pilgrimwood Grade 5 gifted removed. That should have only been on the Morden chart, just to clarify that. So you see the Grade 5 students included in the Pilgrimwood numbers and not in the, sorry, the Pilgrimwood Grade 5 students included in the Pilgrimwood chart and not included in the Morden chart. Correct. Sorry, when I say Grade 5s, I'm talking about the students next year, they are the current Grade 4s, correct. So, that's the essence of why this is before you for information, I'd be glad to take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I think, first of all, I think in the, in the interest of our parents in the audience, I think it's important to note that for future reports, we look at the agenda and we move some of these key items in an order that makes sense, so that these parents don't have to wait till 10 o'clock to, to hear on another that's of interest. Sorry? Okay, but, but we know this is a topic of interest, we can anticipate that. Okay, so, my point, given that we acknowledge that this is a one-year solution, and we need to develop a longer-term plan for accommodation, as Chair of the Program and Accommodation Committee, I'd like to give notice that I would like to put this on the agenda at, for our agenda, and I'm thinking September sometime, for the Program and Accommodation Committee. Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, when you say "this," you don't mean this situation, you mean?
This, this situation, and looking at developing a plan, and what that means.
Is this not for September implementation?
Sorry, I don't mean the going forward with the plan, that's fine, but it's the looking at the long-term solution.
Can you put your mic on when you're speaking, sorry? You're speaking to it?
I'm looking here, the mic's here. All right. Okay. Yes. So, not the solution, that's fine, it's the looking at the long-term solution for how to resolve the issue with the growing accommodation pressures. I'd like to put that on the agenda for the Program and Accommodation Committee sometime in September. Thank you.
Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. My question is, has there been communication already with those families that would have moved grade, from Grade 4 over to Morden and Grade 5? And if so, what kinds of feedback have you been hearing? And I, you know, I'm really interested in this piece with respect to accommodation in southwest Oakville, and, you know, this was an unforeseen thing, these, it happens. So, yeah, I'm really interested in the feedback that you may have been hearing already, thanks.
Through the chair, trustee L. Harrison. We haven't informed parents yet, because we want, we wanted to bring this to you tonight. First, the trustees heard it first. We do have a letter prepared that principals will send home tomorrow, the principal will send home tomorrow to inform those families, so we can, we can gather the, the feedback that the principal hears and share that with you in the future, for sure.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
This is becoming an annual event where we're trying to determine where the gifted kids are going to be placed, and I would like to see us look towards a solution for not just Oakville, but for all areas of our board, where we can find appropriate Grade 1 through 8 placement in one building, so that these children, many of whom are vulnerable to transitions, are making as few transitions as possible. Because the way we're currently doing it is, oh, we've got room here, let's put them here for a year, oh, no, it's gonna be two or three years, and, and it's just, it, I understand that we're doing the best we can in a piecemeal fashion, we need to do the best we can in a planned proactive approach. And I would be more than happy to sit on whichever committee is, is going to be looking at this, but I also would like to see invited to this members of our CAC, in particular, if we are going to be only looking at the gifted placement, the members from ABC, if we are going to be looking at our other self-contained placements as well, then I believe that there's, needs to be room made at the table for the associations that represent those children as well.
Want to respond, or?
Sure. Through the chair, absolutely, this needs to be a much longer-term solution we need to look for, absolutely. And tonight, after this information, I'll be sending a message to CAC that they're well-informed.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Gray.
I'll decline, thanks.
Trustee Graves.
I do believe that one of the items we have on program accommodation is the, the process around how we do all of, all of these, so I'm very much looking forward to, to being involved in, in that process. I do have to say, I'm a little bit concerned that we're talking about a change for September 2015, and the parents aren't aware yet. I personally, I would have liked to have the parents involved a little bit earlier in that process, and, and perhaps give us some, some feedback. So, at this late date, at the, at the very least, if we could engage with those parents as quickly as, as possible, and in a way that is sensitive to the fact that this is, you know, they're expecting their child to go to one school in September, and, and that's changing. What I do appreciate about this report is that we're not moving students who are already established in, in the Grade 5 program at, at the school. That's, that's a really great piece, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope. Trustee Graves touched on most of what I wanted to say, but there are, we now are going to have children who are potentially living next door to each other, going to two different gifted programs. Those that were in primary gifted are gonna continue at Pilgrimwood, and those that have been newly identified will end up going to Morden. So, have we costed up the transportation on this? Because we have 62 new students, and we might be passing each other. So I just wondered whether there's any flexibility as far as all newly identified go to Morden and all primary or at Potomwood? Some parents may have thought their children were about to be in the same school, those who have had children in primary gifted and had one who was already, had just started at Morden, for instance. And that communication piece, I mean, the only saving grace on this is the children are staying where they go now, in that at least they will undo their plans and go back to the way they have it now. And if they do happen to have children following behind them, that might make it easier than a 3 and a 5 are now in the same school. But I, I am particularly, it's unfortunate that we couldn't quite see that there was a problem, because I think you probably had a problem even with the kids, the 46, moving them, even if nobody else had shown up. So, I think perhaps maybe the problem, anyway, it, it's probably a combination of that neighborhood's regeneration, as well as the newly identified, and as well as the success of our primary gifted program, but I think we should get, work it on 2016, 17.
I'll respond partially. I, I'm really pleased that we're going to have this as a topic at a Program and Accommodation meeting, because I think it's, it's overdue to, to look at the accommodation of not only our gifted students, but all special education students, because I agree, transitions is not a good thing for, for students in, in our specialty program. Just to explain, this situation came on us rather rapidly, and you recall, the board was made aware of the fast-growing uptake of French immersion, sorry, French immersion of gifted in our, in our district, as a result of a change in our process for identification. So, this, this, this process is only four years old, and we're now bordering on 7% of the population, 8% of the population of Oakville is now in, being identified as gifted. No one would have predicted that. It was not our past practice, and it's been on the increase for the last three years, so I think the solution we came up with is, is as good a solution as we can do in the short term, and hopefully, the, bringing this to the Accommodation Committee will produce a more long-term solution.
Thank you, trustee Gray.
Through the chair, to superintendent Zahnfeld, just want to find out, is there any ability to have choice in this? For example, if a parent had planned on, and the circumstances made it better for their child to go onward to Morden, could they, is there any wiggle room, in other words, for that case, should it present itself?
Through the chair, to trustee Gray. I have the organizations for the two schools here. There is some space in the Grade 5 classes currently at Morden. What we didn't want to do is try to determine for which family or which students that would be an option that they would want or not. And that would, would once again depend on space, because our self-contained classes are, have hard caps from the ministry. So, there would certainly be the, the ability for parents to speak to the principal at Pilgrimwood, you know, it was certainly connected with the principal at Morden, and to look at those individual cases where perhaps there's a sibling at Morden, or if, you know, depending on if they've, you know, if they're still in a position around after-school care, that kind of thing, that they have decisions that impact their family in that way, there is some flexibility. But to try and figure that out more broadly, we decided, let's leave that as an individual discussion that those families could have.
Thank you. And seeing no more speakers, thank you very much for your report tonight. Thank you, Superintendent Zahnfeld. So, our next item is the Administrative Procedures Update, Director Uwali, report 15088, on page 55 of the board package.
Thank you, trustees, just, just one revised procedure in this report tonight, it is concerning the selection of vendors of records for architects and consultants. Trustees should be aware that a correction was sent to them on Friday, I think, I believe it was Friday. The correction was on the amounts on Section, Section 3. We were trying to ensure they were compliant with our purchasing policy, but the amounts that are, that are referred to in, in Section 3 are the project amounts, not the fees. So, they, we upped the amounts, that was Monday, thank you, we upped the amounts because a $100,000 project yields a very small, small fee, so that's why we, we changed the amount to $300,000.
Is the new revised one? Are you on the speakers list? Well, it's point of order, is, is the, is the revisions up on the? On the website as of Monday? Is there any comments, other comments or questions for the director? Seeing none, we are now up to committee reports, do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank those of you who came out to the OpsA GM, there was a lot of great learning, and I know that the Community Hub discussion was extremely heated, and there were a lot of things shared there, so, I'm sorry. Just talking about the OpsA AGM, and thanking people for coming, and talking about the Community Hubs meeting, and also just to let you know that you will be receiving an email from me in my capacity as Central West VP regarding the regional meeting for OpsA in October. It is set for October 24th, and it was to be a shared meeting with the Western Region, but we found at the OpsA AGM that the Durham District School Board is holding a one-day conference on poverty, that looks absolutely fantastic. So a number of Central West trustees indicated an interest that they would rather go there than the regional meeting, so I'm gonna be sending out a survey to ask people if they wanna keep it on the 24th, or they wanna move it to the 31st. Next meeting, I would try to remember to bring information on that poverty conference for you. And as well, I also, they had little wheels that you could spin around, and they were Robert's Rules, and it was each one, you know, if you were making an amendment, and then it was listed, do you need a second, do you need all that? And I picked up one for each of you, and I'm sorry, I forgot it tonight, but I will bring it with me next week.
Wonderful. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So, the Center for Skills and Development met today, and just wanted to update the board that they have, have, they have selected a new CAO, but we can't announce what that looks like, because they're still negotiating the, the contract of employment. So, once that's clarified, we'll have great news to share.
Great. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank my colleagues for nominating me to be the Chair of the Program and Accommodation Committee, and I look forward to working with trustee Gray as the vice chair. At our last meeting, we had a presentation on the Milton Program that accommodates elite athletes, and I think it's worth continuing to explore that further, in terms of seeing whether we can grow that kind of a program, and, you know, where, which schools, which municipalities would be suitable for it. So that will be another agenda item that I think is, is worth exploring early in the new school year.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. I wanted to let everybody know that I attended the meeting of the Halton Eco Learning Partnership here at the board office. Suzanne Burwell is our staff person, and Ron Ballantyne, who is also a wonderful resource to that committee and to our school community, will be retiring, so he will be a, a great loss, but it's great that he's on to another exciting adventure. At that committee, we talked about active transportation quite a bit, and how we might kind of flip that messaging and paradigm from our messaging around, you know, you're coming back to school, here's where you park your cars, and this is our processes, how can we talk to parents and make riding, walking, to and from bus stops, and to and from school the, the activity or the, the mode of transportation of choice? And so we were talking about messaging around that, and also a great partnership activity with our regional municipalities and our co-terminus board around that, so, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I completely forgot two things when I was giving the OpsA report. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate trustee Gray on being elected to represent seven school boards from the Central West Region at the policy work team. So, it's a lot of work, she took that on, and we're very grateful for that. And the other piece I had meant to tell you is that they have asked that you please set aside the date, if you can, of April 7th to, and April 8th, for the Children and Youth Mental Health Summit. This is something that they have every two years, it is next April at the Austream Conference Centre in Toronto, and they encourage boards to put together teams to go, not just trustees, but staff and community stakeholders. Everyone has a stake in children's mental health, and I have not attended one of these yet, but I've heard, yeah, kids getting a thumbs up from Ann, so I've heard that they, they are beyond amazing in terms of the... So I've heard that they are beyond amazing in terms of learning experiences. So I did want to pass that on as well.
Could you email that in? Because I know I won't remember that date. Thank you. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Trustee Gray. And I thank you very much, Trustee Daniele, for your comments, but also kudos to Donna, who has also been re-elected to the position of the Chair of Central West, doing a great job in leading all seven boards in all issues regarding OpsA business. So congratulations and.
The other thing I should let you know is that I'm also still your representative as OPSA's Executive Liaison to the First Nations Council, but I am now the President of OpsA, has designated me to take his spot at the Ministry Advisory Council as well on our regional affairs.
Trustee L Harrison.
Speaking of the ministry, I just wanted to add some good news. And it is, I should have reported it earlier, but the Outdoor Ed Experiential Learning Funds that were to be ending this year, my understanding is that the ministry has provided those funds to our board again this year. So we'll be able to continue those great programs, Outdoor Ed Experiential stuff that we're doing. Thanks.
That's great. And I'd like to report on PIC. I was at their meeting and they're full in swing of planning their next conference, which is October the 17th. So make sure you mark that down in your calendar. It's going to be at White Oak Secondary School. And it's always an awesome day. So lots of great workshops and so. Okay, so our next item is the Director's Report.
Thank you, Chairperson. I have several good news items to report tonight. First of all, congratulations to 60 schools who achieved Ontario Eco Schools Certification this year, including nine schools that have achieved this certification for five years or more. And this year, we had four bronze winners, 30 silver winners, 24 gold and two platinum. Secondly, join me in congratulating Ruth Tesari. She is an IPL with our board responsible, with a high level of responsibility for mathematics initiative. She's receiving the 2015-16 Award for Excellence and Innovation in Mathematical Education from the prestigious Ontario Mathematical Coordinators Association. This award is voted on by provincial colleagues and recognizes the leadership Ruth has provided to our system and the province. The Halton School Board has been awarded the Scholastic Partnership Award of the Year based on a nomination submitted by Big Brothers and Big Sisters. The school board will be presented the award at the National Awards Function on June 25th. I don't think I have the location, I think it's Toronto.
At the Bank of Montreal Institute.
Oh, where?
It is in Toronto.
I could read that, I just didn't know where it was. I didn't want to assume it was in Montreal. And last on the good news report is recognition that Hawthorn Village Public School in Milton is in the top 25 schools in the province for raising money for the Terry Fox Annual Run. And I'd also like to report that probably more, even more significantly is we have 84 schools participating in this annually. And that's a very high percentage of our schools participating in the Terry Fox Run for cancer. Oh, and Stuart has one. And Associate Stuart has one. Yes, what is that, sorry. I would like to report that a young man from Frank Hayden School, there is now, it's not an OTSA recognised event, but cricket is getting bigger and bigger in Ontario. And as a result, and you've got to keep this under your hat, even though this is a public session, because it's officially, it's being officially announced tomorrow, June 19th by Toronto Mayor John Tory. But there is a cricket team, an all-star select cricket team of high school students from Hamilton to Durham going to Sri Lanka in the fall. And Sayed Izhar from Dr Frank Hayden is one of those players that have been selected to represent cricket across that area, so.
That's fantastic. And I hope he's not listening.
He already knows.
Oh, okay. Does his parents? Do you have anything else?
That's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. We're now up to Communications from the Chair. Well, I have a few. I'll start with my good news report. And I'd like to congratulate White Oak Secondary School as the 2014-15 Award Winners for the Premier's Awards for Accepting Schools. They were recognized as being exceptional and innovative work that's being done in schools to create a safe and accepting school environment. Students, teachers, principals, parents and guardians and other community members at White Oak Secondary School are being recognized for working together to foster a positive school environment that supports student achievement and wellbeing. And I'll send you the link, but it gave all the information about what they were recognized for and it's really quite an exceptional award, so. And that's for, they were the only one in this area and the only one from our school I'd also like to share that I was at White Oaks as well today for the Futures Graduation. And I didn't realize I had to take my hanky, but the four graduates spoke so well and they were exceptional. And it was a really moving ceremony and Superintendent Hunt Givens and I were sitting there crying without any Kleenex, but it was just an amazing day. I don't need it now, I'm good. Thank you. But the thought counts. I'd also like to share that the Director's Search Company, Phelps Group, has created a questionnaire so that we can gather public input. And it will be put on the website for one, it is already on the website? Okay, it'll be up for one week, so as of a week tomorrow morning, it'll be gone. So people have a week to share that and make sure that the public has that opportunity to provide some input as well. It's being shared with staff throughout the system as well. And one last thing, I'd like to, Chris, can you come up here so you're in front of the camera? I'd just like to thank Chris Lilis from Hampton Video and Sound so much because he is the one who has made this system work for us. He is the one who's done the programming. And I understand it has never been done before, it's unique of its kind, and now he has international customers potentially looking at it. I know that we as trustees like to thank you for dragging us into the 21st century and being able to now share with the community and be even clearer about what we're doing and more transparent. So I'd like to thank you so much for all your efforts.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And then Jeff, come on up. I'd also like to thank Jeff Bowman, who has been the other person who has been making this work, who has been spending so much time and energy in his off-hours, as a part of another part of his job, to come and learn this and make it work. And I'm sorry I missed your retirement, but I heard my words were shared. And I'd just like to congratulate you again on your retirement and thank you for doing this and helping us make this work. So thank you very much. Okay, so now we're up to trustees' questions and comments. Do we have any trustee questions and comments tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just a reminder to my co-trustees that this Friday, we have the rescheduling of the Special Athletes Track Meet. Myself and Trustee L Harrison are planning to attend and hopefully will be utilized in some capacity, but just to spread awareness out there because I know there was quite a bit of a concern from the community when it was canceled. I think they canceled it rightly for the rain, so thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Givens.
Thank you. So I have, Associate Director Miller stole some of my news, but congratulations to Sayed. And Clarksville had a really fantastic fun fair last night. They couldn't have asked for better weather, well-attended and Principal Reeser was out there, you know, flipping burgers, it was fantastic. And also over at CH Norton, they had Pan Am Games. So students were, across the grades, were split into teams representing each country. This included an opening ceremony where teams presented their flags and team cheers. And students also enjoyed fruit snacks that represented various countries prepared by their school council healthy snack committee.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Last Thursday, I held the third super council meeting of this term with great turnout. And I thank Superintendent Dyson and Assistant Principal Terry Blackwell for presenting on the upgrades to the physical education and health curriculum and for sharing that information with the parents so they can in turn share it with their parent community. It was a great meeting. And also another hot topic that has been continuing as a topic of discussion at the super councils is that of active transportation and how to enable and empower both the student and parent communities to become more active in that way and encourage kids to bike, walk, skateboard to from school as possible or walk to their bus stop if they're being bused to a school. And so this nicely connects with and touches on Trustee L Harrison's update on her committee work. She and I attended the Active Safe, Active, sorry, Active Safe School Transportation, Active, no, 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 Active Safe School Transportation, I think, Hub, I apologize. It was the second meeting and there was representation from all municipalities and both school boards with Suzanne Burwell, our staff person being present there. Both Trustee L Harrison and I share interest in supporting the schools in our wards with active transportation initiatives. And I'm sure that is something that's shared by all of you. So I apologize, I know it's late in the evening, but I wanted to just touch on this because I would like to bring forward a motion for our support. And that's something that I will work for our next meeting. I'm very familiar with the Active Safe Routes to School pilot that took place several years ago. I'm familiar with what made it successful and what were some of the parent barriers. And as past Chair of a school council, who had created a subcommittee to encourage active transportation to school and got parent engagement, I'm very well aware and familiar with the realities of active transportation for our school communities. And so the approach needs to be multifaceted and involve a broad range of community partners. And marketing certainly is a key. One of the things that we can do right off the bat is when we look at our school agenda is to focus on messaging around, you know, you live within such a walking distance. Encourage your kids, you know, do your bike, walk, or if you need to be driven, consider being driven partway so you can walk the remainder of the way. If you're a bus student, do use active transportation to get yourself to the bus stop. Those should be key messages in our school agendas, written in a very user-friendly format. So when parents are flipping through, they can get the messaging. And then we talk about the busing, right? That should be secondary, not the primary focus of interest. So that's just one thing that we can quickly do. We can encourage our principals to possibly host, you know, the fall open houses, host a session jointly with our community police officer liaisons, that sort of thing. So that's something that I'll be exploring in my ward. So this Hub, ASST Hub, is a great venue and collaborative partnership to guide the work in this particular area. What is required though is resources, both human and financial, to make this a sustainable initiative. And so I look forward to this board lending its support and collaborating with the key stakeholders. And so my petition will be around that kind of an engagement.
You're past your three minutes.
And, yeah, seeking support. Thank you.
Maybe that should go to the Transportation Committee. Trustee Gray. I realize the time is getting quite late and with the indulgence of everyone, I have a comment and a question. I'll start with a question through the Chair to Superintendent Dyson. In April of 2015, the Halton District School Board directed the Chair of the Board to write a letter to the Minister of Education outlining the Board's insistence on training, funding and resource support prior to the implementation of the new health and physical education curriculum. Through this request for training, funding and resource support, the Board of Trustees wished to ensure the successful delivery and achievement of the learning objectives of the new curriculum and that our teaching staff would have the training opportunities and resources they needed. Given now that in many instances, many of our members or our teaching staff have been unable to participate in professional training, what are the plans in moving forward regarding the rollout of this new curriculum?
Through the Chair to Trustee Gray. I can give you an outline of what we're presently preparing and what the training will entail. But we do have our central staff, our itinerant program leaders are currently planning the training for the teachers. And because of the sanctions in the schools, in some respects, they actually have a little bit more time for planning. So we do have a crew working on this. We do believe we're going to be ready to roll it out as soon as the sanctions are completed. Part of the complicating factor is while we want to, well, our training plan is going to work very hard to integrate the human growth and sexual health expectations throughout the year as opposed to in one big chunk, we have to remember that there's more than the sexual health component to the health curriculum. It actually has four big topics. They are healthy eating, personal safety and injury prevention, substance use, abuse, addictions and related behaviors, as well as the human development and sexual health. So if forced to, you know, if sanctions go on for a long time, we will ensure that any expectations that are new in the sexual health component are not taught until the latter part of the year when we can address the training. However, the training plan that we're working on integrates those throughout the year because it's our preference not to leave them to the end of the year. But I can assure you, we're not going to deliver those, have our teachers deliver the new areas until we've done the training. So we're taking a look at that and there's lots of expectations in there to cover it. So the following aspects are under development to support our teachers. We've got our staff working on a year-at-a-glance charts that will show the continuum, the step-by-step flow of the curriculum expectations for each grade so that as part of the training, they will, teachers will be, teachers will have a chart and some training to help them understand when is the optimum time in the year to deliver certain expectations. We're currently aligning the resources that we do have to support the revisions in the curriculum. We are anticipating, if sanctions are over, we will do fall training sessions for two lead teachers per elementary school as well as for our instructional program leaders because they in turn will be the key people who will then deliver training in the schools for other teachers who haven't attended that regional training. And that is our training model. We used it with the new social studies curriculum, that sort of thing. We are currently developing a continuum of resources that's tied to the main themes that weave through the health curriculum. And you'll recognize those because Halton itself has done extensive work on these areas. So we're breaking them down and attaching to curriculum. Those areas are mental health and wellbeing. So there will be a grade-level continuum developed, the teachers will be. will be a grade-level continuum developed that the teachers will be trained in, healthy relationships, safe online communication, as well as diversity with its many different components. The other thing that we're working on, NTIP is actually one of the areas that's not currently under sanctions. So we, our NTIP model is to integrate, sorry, oh, sorry, sorry, NTIP, the New Teacher Induction Program. So the ministry gives money for teachers in their first two years of schooling to receive training as designated by the board. So we're integrating the health curriculum into that. So we know our new teachers are actually going to receive some training in advance of other teachers. There's just a little bit more here, but it gets into the topics for you.
I knew she wouldn't be able to answer this.
We've been doing so much work on it. It was just sort of throwing it together for you. The training for the teachers itself is going to focus on the following things. The year-at-a-glance I mentioned and how they're going to use that, training on the specific areas and the expectations that have changed. So what is new? And then we'll focus our training on that. Where do these new areas fit into the continuum of learning that's developed in each of those different areas that I mentioned? Training on the strategies that are best used for these new areas, these new expectations, and they tend to be some of the ones that are causing public concern. What resources should and should not be used? And this is something we got as feedback at some of our parent sessions that Terry Blackwell and I have been doing, because I think there is an assumption on the part of parents that we will be using some resources that they don't think we should use. We won't be using that type of resource, which I won't go into what they are. Big area of the training for teachers, which is another piece that's been shared in the parent presentations, is how, what are the strategies and the understandings that teachers need to develop to use the examples that are provided in the curriculum, as well as how should they best select which prompt to use in the curriculum? So the examples and the prompts aren't actually part of the expectations. They're not part of the curriculum, but their approach as teachers can use either to answer questions that kids come up with, or to select the examples based upon their knowledge and awareness of their community, the cultural, the religious background, the values of the community, particular issues that the classrooms are dealing with, whether it's bullying or inappropriate name-calling on the schoolyard. So training our teachers, pick the ones that best work for the students you have that will help them move forward. And that'll be a big part of the training. That includes sensitivity, large part of sensitivity. So we know that the year-at-a-glance, while it's intended to support schools in spreading out the human growth and sexual health topics across the grades throughout the year, we know we may not be able to stick to that, depending upon when the sanctions end, but that will be very important in our guidance. In terms of what will be ready for the fall, one of the things we're going to ask all of our principals to do, and some of them will hear about this at the conference, in a workshop, others will address them all in September, but we want them to actually share the PowerPoint that's been shared with the parents, because there's lots of good learning in there for teachers in the school to have, who themselves won't be delivering the health curriculum, but to understand what's going on. So the big areas of knowledge or concept training that the teacher training will address, there's six of them. That whole concept of consent, how do we develop that in, for students in Grade One up through to Grade 12, because it very much builds? And how does consent play into the student's concept of their own wellbeing and the development of their sense of positive self-concept? Okay? And safe online communication, and that, a big part of that is in the intermediate grades, but that actually starts in the primary grades in the health curriculum. But sexting plays a big part in that. And we know that one in four teens has actually sexted themselves. That's a pretty amazing statistic. Focus on mental health learning, how does this connect to the individual feelings that students have as they mature? We'll be having our teachers take a look at suicide rates amongst various teen groups, because it is higher in some, and therefore that ties back to how they grow and develop, and how the teachers deal with those concepts in the classrooms. We'll be taking a look at that whole age of onset of puberty, how it's moved further down, and how to address that through the expectations in a class where some children are undergoing puberty and others don't even know what the word means, no concept. So how does that align with students? And, sorry, that aligns with the intent of helping the teachers make sure that they address the concept of what do kids need to know before they actually do become sexually active? So we're going to spend some time on that. Gender identity and sexual orientation, that'll be a big focus of the training for teachers. And that aligns very clearly with our own equity in inclusive education in the board. And the big, the big piece, of course, that weaves through all of this is the shift from teaching kids about topics to teaching kids the skills to deal with the topic knowledge they've acquired and how it impacts. It's very much about decision-making. We do want you to know, though, that our program staff and our diversity staff have been working really very closely together on this. And we see this teacher training as a golden opportunity, so to speak, to bring some of that equity work into the classroom, because it rests inside a lot of the sex ed curriculum expectations for our teachers. So we do have a plan. It's pretty specific. Our staff's working pretty hard. I think we've, we've got a number of strategies that will let us hit the ground running, or we'll wait it out a bit, we'll shift what's done when, and get into the more sensitive expectations once the sanctions are over and once we've done the training.
Thank you. And just so you know, trustee Gray, we have not received a letter back from the ministry in response to the letter we sent either.
Just two quick comments. A shout-out to Acton High School, the Vice Principal Collins Sell and Principal Darlene White, who have received funding to develop a community initiative that actually has come out of San Francisco called Community Matters. And basically, it's to support a program called Safe School Ambassadors. And they're pretty excited about what this will mean for their community up in Acton. And a shout-out, I believe tomorrow night is a very important night here in the board, if I have it right. A shout-out to all of the people that will be honoring tomorrow night, the retirement of staff affair. So we're all looking forward, as trustees, those of us able to attend, to being there to celebrate the achievements and accomplishments of the wonderful staff here at the Halton School Board.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Director and all of his staff for all of the work they've done around the report card issue. I know the trustees have gotten a lot of emails, discussions, conversations. We had our own ideas. We've read what's out there. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for getting us through the process. We are more than happy to support the decision that you've come to, and how we got there. And knowing, wanted to give you the opportunity just to comment on the next steps in what people should expect in the next days.
Yeah, I really appreciate the comments. And you know that we've been working on this for a long time, and so have other boards. We knew that we couldn't burden principals with this. That was the early decision to make. And since then, we've been thinking of ways of making this work. I think we have a way now. We haven't worked out all the details yet, but we will certainly keep the public and trustees informed of the process. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. No, not yet. I just wanted people to know, it's 11 o'clock, and we had to keep two of our members here so that they could remember their last board meeting with us until 11 o'clock. And we are going to really miss them. But we're, Bruce Smith and Yao Bang is, this is, I'm not even going to call them superintendents, because they're going to be leaving us. So just Yao and Bruce. We're going to miss you guys so much. Thank you very much for all that you have done for the school board, the students, and staff. And we really appreciate all your efforts. We'll miss you. Keep in touch. And thank you.
Don't cry.
Okay, so now it is after 11 o'clock, and they're going to remember this. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Grebance, seconded by trustee Reynolds. All those in favor? Just a minute?
Yeah, and you have to be here at nine, because the first interview is at nine. It's not the prep time. Yeah, I got the questions done and everything.
I guess they guys locked us in, so put your hands up. Okay, go home. Thank you.
The first interview is now.
About 3:30.
Our last interview should be ending about 2:30.